Okay, oh, here's Jason. We'll get ourselves in order as soon as Jason sits down. All right, so let's call the Planning Commission meeting to order and let's have Jennifer Kennedy do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner McKinnon?
Present.
Commissioner Purdy?
Here.
Chair Frisco?
Here.
Planning Director, please?
Good evening, Commissioner. Welcome, Commissioner Landris. Last night, City Council directed staff to, under a 13 item, look at fast food uses on the promenade. So we will be exploring that issue and figuring out if it's best to go to the council with the ordinance directly or if it's part of our buckets that we're doing with zoning ordinance changes. So that's something we'll be looking at over the next few weeks. Also, City Council approved an update to the tenant protection ordinance and also adopted the telecommunications ordinance that you guys reviewed a couple months ago. Coming up at City Council, next meeting, August 28th, excuse me, September 5th, yeah, is that right? That's Planning Commission.
Yeah.
So City Council, I'm sorry, City Council, October 9th is the adoption of the LCP. And then for Planning Commission, next meeting after tonight is September 5th, we have study session for the housing legislation and then also a fence wall hedge appeal at 1414 California. And then on September 12th, so we have back-to-back meetings next month, we have two housing projects, 1920 Oceanfront Walk and then 1828 Ocean Avenue. No meeting on September 19th. And then back on October 3rd, we have a housing project on Virginia at 2002 through 2018 21st Street. It's Virginia condos, but it's on 21st Street. We have another project, 1802 Santa Monica Boulevard, which is development review permit for an auto dealership, and then a fence wall hedge appeal at 1130 Pearl Street. And then also that night, a resolution of intention for the next set of zoning ordinance amendments. And let's see, what else? There is Parks and Recreation Master Plan Workshop scheduled for August 25th from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Is that Virginia Avenue Park or where is that?
At the Civic Auditorium.
At the Civic Auditorium.
Did you say Memorial Park?
It's the, it's, it's at the Civic Auditorium.
No, no, what workshop?
It's the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So it's not a specific park, it's the whole master plan. And that concludes my report. I also wanted to thank Commissioner Kennedy for her service and time, seeing in eight years of all the things we've done. Certainly the zoning ordinance update, the downtown community plan. I know there's sidewalk space that we will walk around and attribute to Commissioner Kennedy, and I thank you for your contributions. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you very-
Oh my gosh, that's so loud. Nobody ever sits here, so you wouldn't know.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. But really, the pleasure has been all mine. I really enjoyed working with this entire commission. Sean, congratulations. I know you'll do a great job and, of course, enjoy working with all the previous commissioners and it's really been an honor serving the community in this way. There has been a lot of plans, Sean, there's a lot of reading, but it's worth every second and working with the staff, of course, is a pleasure. And I know that you'll be as great to him and everyone else as you were to me for all those eight years. So thank you very much and thank you, the commission.
We have cookies.
On behalf of the staff, thank you.
That's wonderful. I'm gonna go take a seat and I'll see you for the corporate housing item in a little while. Thank you all.
Commissioner Kennedy, we haven't finished yet. You just stay there.
I was gonna just say that I will think of you every time I swing my arms freely on a sidewalk. And I will miss your heart on this commission. You brought a lot of warm heart to the way you looked at all the projects and that was really great. Thank you.
So Commissioner Kennedy, eight years on the Planning Commission, both as a chair and a deputy chair, but for the city of Santa Monica, you were eight years at the rent control and you were the chair there as well. So 16 years of service to our community is a considerable length of time in tenant protection and in planning during years when we had 35 and 38 meetings a year. And of course, we all know we're down to two or three now. So, but a considerable service and I don't think people realize how difficult it is to maintain the focus during all that time. And I sat next to you for a long period of the time, so I know the amount of work that you put into every meeting because it covered pages and pages and pages of background material. Never more beautifully illustrated than last time round when you knew the page and the detail and the number, both in the draft and the draft before that and the final of that coastal plan, which most of the rest of us were struggling with. So on behalf of the community and the Planning Commission that's been here for eight years and the Planning Department, thank you very much for the work that you put in. We appreciate it immensely.
Can I, I'm gonna really miss you and I'm gonna miss your candy. And you're probably the only other coffee drinker other than I, so I hope that Kyle gets the message that I still drink coffee. I've also sort of decided that like former presidents, you will always be Commissioner. So you will always be Commissioner Kennedy in my book. I want to thank you for your never-ending housing advocacy and I expect that to continue. And the, particularly on the short-term rental stuff, we had a conversation earlier today and I had no idea of the breadth of this issue, so I want to thank you for that. And I know you're gonna persist. And thank you for the, on behalf of the people of Santa Monica, for your service. You can't get out yet. So I wanna dittle what everyone has already said, but what I'd really like to focus on is your real attention to detail. You're not afraid to drill down. And a lot of times, it looks like you're going nowhere, but eventually you do find a nugget. And that's important. And it's worth going through all that stuff to find that nugget. And you of everybody on this commission that I've seen seem to be able to do that and smile while you're doing it. So, thank you.
Okay, are we all done? All right, thank you very, very much.
I'm sorry, maybe the request to speak isn't working?
Oh no, is it broken?
Mine is.
Oh, there's blanks.
Oh, I guess that's me.
You're a blank.
Oh no, I'm gonna have to pay attention.
Commissioner Kennedy, you know, in addition to all the things that everyone has said, you know, one of the things that I really appreciate about your time on the commission, from, from a personal standpoint, is the, the level of collaboration. Even when, you know, you, I'm sure if you lined up our votes, my votes and your votes, we'd see a lot of times we agreed and a lot of times that we disagreed. But through it all, there was collaboration and collegiality. And I think that that's one of the defining characteristics of my time on the commission and I really appreciate it. And I look forward to it continuing in some other form.
I'm gonna have to go too, right? Oh. Yeah, I think everyone has said such beautiful and accurate and authentic things about you, but I too, like Richard, really appreciate the incredible years of service and dedication to the work that, you know, you have, you've invested into this community. And we're all gonna benefit from it. I'll miss you. Thank you all so much. I'm really humbled by your kind words. Thanks.
And you've got two cookies.
Beautiful. All right.
I will miss being a Planning Commissioner, but I assure you that I'll be around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as one door closes, another door opens. And we have Sean Landris as our new Planning Commissioner, who was sworn in before the meeting, but I'm told he did in fact swear to protect us against enemies foreign and domestic. So, yeah, both kinds. So I think we're good to go. All right.
I have a question, staff.
All right, let's hear it.
Was that, the condo project you were talking about in Pico, is that the one at 21st and Virginia?
Yes.
Oh, good god. And they've done all their environmental work or they wouldn't be here?
Yes.
So it's more than a tract map? I think they already got that. Okay, thank you.
And may I ask a question of Mr. Martin? So, Mr. Martin, when is your starring role with the scooters going to be at the City Council? That's the night that I would like to come and see.
So, just to clarify the process, it doesn't go back to City Council. The public comment period closes Friday, this Friday at 2:00. And then a final decision is to be made by August 30th.
Now, will you do that? Will you put out a press release or go up into the steps and make the announcement to the-
There'll be some kind of, some release from City Hall. I'm not sure exactly what form that will take, but-
And you'll go on holiday straight afterwards, will you?
We'll get the word out.
Wear a helmet. So, thank you. That brings us to yet another new member of our team. We have a new staff attorney with us, and that's Heidi. And I'm not gonna say your last name, I'm sorry. I can spell it, though. Can you help us with that?
It's pronounced Von Tonglen?
Von Tonglen. Okay, beautiful. I just have to say I've known Heidi for a long time. She was the attorney on the Landmarks Commission. So it's not that I don't know and respect her greatly, I just don't know how to say her name. But, welcome. And that- Deputy City Attorney?
Commissioners, it's my pleasure to introduce to the commission on behalf of the City Attorney's Office Heidi Von Tonglen, who is really a longstanding member of the City Attorney's Office and who has worked on so many planning matters. And you probably have worked with her on planning matters here as she's advised you from that very dius location on matters like 401 Ocean, 423 Ocean. She's also been a long, a long-time attorney assigned to the Landmarks Commission. She has been a municipal lawyer for well over 10 years and has very deep and vast knowledge on planning and landmarks laws. And we're so pleased that she will be serving as your legal counsel principally on a going-forward basis. And Susan Cola, who has spent a lot of time with you, will continue to be here with you to give you advice on matters such as development agreements. So it will not be a goodbye for Susan as well. You'll certainly see her. And our office is so pleased with the team that we've assembled to provide advice both to the Planning Department and to the commission. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce Heidi.
Thank you. And are there, you have more to say?
If I could just go, since we're doing introductions. So Kyle is a little bit under the weather, so we have a couple of our staff assistants who are filling in. So Melissa and Michelle, I just wanted to introduce them. Kyle will be back next meeting. They definitely pitch any and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
They've been very good at the ARB.
Just so you know, our cue buttons aren't working, so we're gonna have to go back to the old way, which, yeah, where you do that, jump up and down, call my name, because you know what? That's not my strength, is peripheral vision. So that leads us to Commissioner announcements. Are there any? I guess not. So then we have approval. Would you like to speak? The other button.
There we go. Okay. I just wanted to thank you for the warm welcome and say as well that I have big shoes to fill, particularly in the housing advocacy that Commissioner Kennedy, always Commissioner Kennedy, has brought to the commission for the past eight years. And I look forward to serving alongside all of you and to, I was reading the draft mission statement earlier today and look forward to that discussion because I really appreciate the vision that was articulated in that statement and look forward to being part of a group of people committed to, to achieving that for all Santa Monicans. So, thank you.
Thank you. So that moves us to approval of minutes. We have minutes here from June 6th. There was one spot. I'm just gonna jump in on page four. In that last paragraph, there's XXX. And I'm sorry to say, I sent Kyle some notes that we had talked about at our last meeting and they were not eligible, I mean legible, in that spot. I can just read you the sentence that was supposed to be there, which is a quote. "We should stick to the plan and ensure that veneers over our authentic facades are not approved." End quote. So with that change, and if there's anything else anybody else has to say, maybe we can approve these minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess we should have a voice vote?
I.
Hi.
All right, sorry. Right. So would you like to say, "I abstain"?
I abstain.
Beautiful. Sean abstains. I mean, Commissioner Landris. Beautiful. We have no statements of official action. So that brings us to our first, Amy?
You can make your statement and then I'll make my statement.
Okay. At 2924 Wilshire Boulevard, there's a conditional use permit. The applicant requests approval of the CUP to allow incidental onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine in conjunction with a proposed instructional art studio.
I'm gonna recuse myself because my family owns property nearby.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. So-
Are there any chits on this?
Yes, there are. There are two chits. Are there any other disclosures?
This is on consent, right?
Yeah.
So we don't need to disclose?
All right, if removed. But we do have chits.
And if there are no commissioners that are seeking to pull it and if the members that want to, the members of the public that want to speak on it are speaking in support of the conditions and approval, then it can stay on-
I wanna pull it because I want to add a condition.
All right. So may we have a staff report, please? I think we have to have a staff report if we pull it.
Good evening, commission. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is James. I'm with the City Planning Division. I am the planner that took this case. And thank you. Thank you very much. Tonight's case is a request for alcohol conditional use permit, 18 ENT 0154, located at 2924 Wilshire Boulevard. The request is to allow incidental onsite sales and service of alcohol at a proposed instructional art studio called Board and Brush. This is an aerial view of the location. It's located at Stanford Street and Wilshire Boulevard as an inline tenant in a multi-tenant building facing, facing Wilshire Boulevard with the parking at the rear. The site is owned mixed-use boulevard with R2 zones at the rear. The facade as it exists today, the Board and Brush location will be taking over the Oric retail store. There are no exist, other than a tenant improvement building permit, there are no outstanding entitlements that affect the request. Here we have the site plan. The tenant, this is Wilshire Boulevard at the top and Stanford on the back. Parking is at the rear. The main entrance to the tenant space, which is here, is off of Wilshire Boulevard. Here we have the floor plan showing the seating chart for proposed 24 patrons. The main entrance is up here. They have a small area for waiting for students. The seating area, offices, restrooms in the back and display area. Some of the key findings of the many that are detailed in the staff report are that the proposed application appears to be consistent with the loose goals and policies of activating designated boulevards throughout the city, that as conditioned, it is not anticipated that the use would have any negative impacts on the area. Proposed impact, the proposed use would not create an undue alcohol concentration in the area, and that the sale of alcohol will not increase traffic congestion or generate a demand for parking that is adversely affecting the surrounding businesses and residences. There are, again, a number of conditions that have been included in the staff report, but some of the ones that I'd like to highlight are that the, there should be a limitation on the number of seats to keep it at 24 with two waiting seats, that the hours of operation should remain at 9:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. with all staff off-site by 11:00 p.m. And no minimum drink orders be charged or required, and that the primary use- And that the primary use of the facility always be for the instructional services of arts and crafts. Public notices were mailed to residents and property owners within 750 feet. The applicant did reach out to the Mid-City Neighborhoods Community Group, but I do not believe that they heard back. The applicant is here if... For follow-up on that, if there was any information since I last corresponded with them. There were no comments received by staff. I apologize, my PowerPoint is incorrect. There were no comments emailed or phone called to staff. As I mentioned, the applicant is here, as well as I am available for any questions you may have.
Let's just hear some expartes quickly before we proceed with our questions. Are there any? No? No, you have some?
I don't have any question. Do you have an ex parte?
He ju... Yeah.
Only to say that I drove by the site today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I pulled this, I mean, I completely support this project. So if the applicant, that makes the applicant feel better than I do. The one thing I wanted to add, and I don't think the conditions really address that, is that there should not be consumption of alcohol outside the building. Because the parking lot behind the building is adjacent to a residential building, and I don't think that we want to spill over into the parking lot. Well, it says no off-sale consumption off the premises. Now, is the premises the property line or the building? The property line, right? I believe it would be the floor. So I want to make sure that they're not drinking in the parking lot. And that's probably more off-sale liquor than it is.
The premises is the building because ABC licenses the space. Yeah, so it's not like the whole property. So it's condition number seven?
No, I know where it is. I just didn't realize premises was just the building.
Correct, yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. I apologize to everyone.
Beautiful. Yeah.
I'm learning. I had two questions. I noticed that on item eight, council took action last night with respect to the sale of... The use and sale of disposables. And I didn't know whether this particular item, as a result of council's action last night, needed to be updated to reflect imminent city ordinances. I also wanted to ask about the... Whether or not the intention was... Again, I fully support the project, but whether the intention was that alcohol would only be served in the context of classes or whether it would be... Whether the applicant would be permitted to sell alcohol in other... At other times as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Landris. I believe there is a condition of approval that would limit them to serving alcohol only to active students. And as well, the primary focus of the business must be the arts and crafts aspect. So it should not be able to become a bar where you just come in for a drink.
So that's the third sentence in item, in line three, and then the limit... In condition three and the restriction in condition 15. Right? Okay.
I have a comment on that. I thought I read somewhere the special events were going to be allowed in the building. And what if there's an art show? I know the Brentwood Art Center has art shows, and they serve wine. So I don't know if we want to exclude that.
Commissioner, how can you define an art show?
It's a show of art.
Isn't that what they do?
No, they have art classes.
Yes, but surely at some stage they're going to want to show their art as a result of what they do.
But there are going to be people, other than students, coming, and can they drink?
Well, I just start to think you get into difficult areas as to what the students are doing and when they show their art and so on. These are pretty restrictive license. It's not as if that they can turn it into a bar and just have a full-scale party roaring all the time.
It's not at all what I'm...
No, I understand that, but I just think it's a restrictive set of conditions they've got already, which stand up pretty well.
Right. So condition one is the alcohol limited to patrons participating in a class or workshop. And then five is the primary use of the premises as an instructional service, use for arts and crafts instruction. So that's basically the limitation on it. I did want to address Commissioner Landris's question just briefly about the disposal container. So last night, it was the first reading of the ordinance. There still requires a second reading in 30 days, I believe, for that to take effect. It typically doesn't retroactively reach back regardless going forward. I mean, you know, any business would have to comply with that ordinance, you know, when it's in effect in the future.
Jason?
Am I right that we have a couple of requests to speak on this item?
We do. We have... Thank you very much, staff. We have Danielle Little and then Jerry Rubin. Danielle, please step up to the podium and introduce yourself. Ma'am?
Oh, I thought you needed to go back up. Hi, I'm Danielle Little. I've never done this before, so I apologize if I cross any, like, lines or whatnot. I'm a resident nearby, and I just wanted to know the number of people allowed in the building, like, the maximum allow... The maximum number of people that can go in the building, does that correspond with the number of spots in the parking lot?
Do you want to... She wants to know if...
I can clarify if I need be.
So you're asking about the number of parking spaces that are required?
If the maximum allowable occupancy of the building corresponds to the number of parking spots.
Well, so that's not how the parking spaces are determined. They're based on floor area of the space. So they would have a parking requirement for that. It's not associated with how many people come to a class.
Okay. Okay, because I know 24 people are allowed or 24 students are, you know, going to the classes, and I believe that covers the parking. But I just want to know if there's special events and whatnot, and how often there's special events, what the situation is regarding parking.
Thank you. Yeah, we're not really supposed to have a dialogue, so we'll...
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jerry Rubin.
Thank you very, very much, Chair Fresco. Welcome to new Commissioner Sean Landis. And deepest gratitude to Jennifer Kennedy. I remember being at the meeting when she first came on here. She's done a great job, not only here, but, you know, a lot of other groups in the community as well. I support this. And couldn't resist a little joke, since it's an art instructional thing. Seems like a little bit of wine or something. Get so relaxed that paintings will start to all look like Jackson Pollock paintings. Well, I'll work on my delivery. Anyhow, I really think it's great. My wife's an art therapist. It's really, in addition to the art community, and I think it'll be fine and responsibly handled. I do think Commissioner Lambert's added suggestion there sounded pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we... Does the applicant want to speak? Do you have anything to add or contribute? No? All right. Thank you. So that brings it back to us.
I move adoption of application 18 ENT 0154 and I move adoption of the statement of official action.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinnon?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Chair Fresco?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Congratulations. You got your CUP.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item 9A, which is 2822 Santa Monica Boulevard, a development review permit for a new three-story mixed-use retail and apartment building. Do we have any ex parte disclosures? Jason?
Yeah. I found myself across the street from this project last Friday as I was walking into my child's pediatrician's office. And that was around 3:20. And then I saw it again on my way out at 4:30.
Anything? I had a meeting with the applicant on Monday for about an hour, and I just shared some of the things I was concerned about, which I will also share with the Commission during our discussion. And then I went and did a site visit on Tuesday around noon and just walked around the existing development that's there.
I have... I drove by the existing development today to familiarize myself with it again, but I'm pretty familiar with it as it... As my late father and I used to have frequent meals at Dragon Palace. So I know the site. I know the site well.
And I guess that's it for communications staff.
Good evening. Grace Page, Senior Planner. Tonight before you is an application for a three-story mixed-use development. The project contains approximately 10,200 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. It could be divisible into...
I'm just realizing, of course, that Commissioner Anderson is outside.
Outside in the hallway?
I'm being alerted, yes.
I'll begin again.
Sorry, Commissioner Anderson, I almost forgot you, but I didn't completely. Do you have any expartes to share with us before we proceed with our staff report?
Just that I swung by the property Monday evening at about 5:00 o'clock.
Thank you. All right.
Great. Welcome back. The application before you tonight is a development review permit application. It is a three-story mixed-use development with approximately 10,200 square feet of ground-floor commercial space, primarily oriented towards Santa Monica Boulevard, with some wrapping around on Yale Street. There are 50 residential units on the upper-level floors and 129 parking spaces located in two levels of subterranean garage. This project is a Tier 2 project with community benefits. It has a floor area ratio of 1.75, which is distinguished from a Tier 1 project that would have allowed a 1.5 FAR. The applicability of the DRP application, the purpose of it is to review the location, size, massing, placement of the proposed structure, and the proposed uses on the site. The Tier 2 projects are subject to a development review permit, and projects that are greater than 15,000 square feet in size are... Also qualify the development permit review. Sequel exemption pursuant to Government Code Section 21155.1 is applied to this project and also considered a transit priority project. Let's go to the project location. It's located on the southwest corner of Santa Monica Boulevard and Yale Street. In the aerial photo up above, we see the site here outlined in red. It's currently developed with a single-story commercial retail building with multiple tenants. There is a surface parking lot in the front. The site would be demoed to make way for the new project. The zoning is MUBL, which is Mixed Use Boulevard Low along Santa Monica Boulevard, with residential just to the south and right here across the alley. Down below is a context photo of the block. So right here, outlined in red, is the project site. You can see the adjacent structures to the right, which are also commercial. There's the restaurant across the street on Yale. Looking across the street from the site, there is a medical office building, as well as hotel accommodations on the bottom. Okay. So it is a three-story mixed-use project. We went over the programming of the space. There are 20 short-term bicycle parking spaces, as well as 88 long-term. The community benefits outlined in Chapter 2.3... 9.23 are provided. The project did go through preliminary design comments before the Architecture Review Board a few months ago in June. The project was well-received. The applicant was encouraged to further explore landscaping and the screen element that we'll see here in the rendering. In terms of the ground-floor space, the programming is such that in orange is the retail and restaurant... Potential restaurant areas. Outlined in pink are the residential amenities. So you'll see a lobby. There's a fitness room. There's a conference room available as well. In the center of this project is a courtyard space, a central courtyard area. The utility rooms and loading area are adjacent to the alley at the back of the property. Levels 2 and 3 are similar... Or the... Are similar in floor plan. So this is the floor plan outlining the studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms within the project. There are 46 market-rate units. The breakdown is provided in the upper portion of this table. And there are four affordable units available to income levels of 30%. The roof area is equipped to have a roof deck amenity, which includes spa, recreation, barbecue area and seating, and integrates landscaping as well. There is an area allocated for the solar photovoltaic arrangements here. And screened mechanical equipment is proposed on the roof. The area highlighted in green shows the areas that are open to the sky from the central courtyard and also from the recess provided here off of Santa Monica Boulevard. Here are a few renderings of the project. It is contemporary in its design. There's activated use with the ground-floor design with storefronts. The areas are also recessed to provide additional 12 feet of public realm, extending the sidewalk, giving opportunities for either display or seating for a restaurant. The upper right-hand corner shows the space as it relates to the sidewalk. The contemporary architecture does include a series of columns that provide for arcade-like quality at this portion of the project. On the bottom half of this slide, you'll see the project placed in context with the neighborhood profile. And also looking from Yale Street. Down the center of this photo would be Santa Monica Boulevard and Yale Street. We would be looking west on Yale. You can see that in context with the three-story office building across the street. Here is the alley behind the project. The yellow angle is showing the daylight angle required from a development standard standpoint when adjacent to residential zone properties. And immediately north of the alley is... The site is currently developed with a church and school. As a Tier 2 project, the community benefits are... That are required. The applicant's providing for affordable housing of four units in this project, which is at 7.5% of the total units of the project. The unit mix is provided to accommodate the 3, 2, and studio limitations. The fees that would be collected in addition to... It was a 14% increase at the Tier 2 level is outlined here on the slide. And a transportation demand management plan is submitted as part of the community benefits and also has allowances for at least 75% of the cost of a monthly regional transit pass for both the commercial component and the residential. These are the findings that are necessary for a DRP or approval of a DRP. We're looking at compatibility to relate harmoniously with the surrounding sites, making sure that the rights of way can accommodate this new development, making sure that health and safety services are sufficient, and also making sure that the project is in compliance with Municipal Code and policies and goals of the general plan. Further, there's more environmental review, making sure that the impacts... That there aren't any impacts or mitigated impacts, that the project promotes general... The general welfare of the community. And also, for Tier 2 projects, you are required to provide those community benefits. Public notices were sent for this hearing. Also, in the Daily Press, there was onsite posting at this corner parcel. There were four letters in opposition of the project, which the Commission received a copy of, and one letter expressing construction concerns. This was provided from the school and church across the alley. And one email was submitted in support of the project, and it was from the adjacent property owner to the west. In terms of a recommendation from staff, In terms of a recommendation from staff, it is to approve the DRP application and the statement of official action, and just to remind the commission that the Housing Accountability Act does apply to this project and also that it is a transit priority project per SEQUA. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Lambert has a question.
I do.
And just so you know, we do have two chits, so...
Okay, oh, would you want me to wait till afterwards?
I think you can, if you just have the one question.
It's just quick. There, as you know, in the public comment, there was concern about traffic generated potentially by this project. So, I was a little confused by your presentation, because this is SEQUA exempt under the sustainable communities project law or whatever, right?
Correct.
So, did you do a traffic analysis?
A traffic analysis is not required for the exempt.
So, I misunderstood what you said. There wasn't, there's been no traffic analysis done on the project? I mean, it's unlikely there's a significant effect anyway, but it wasn't, you didn't have to do it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
I apologize, as a newbie, I'm asking, I'm going to ask more questions to learn. I was wondering, I noticed that the, that the project includes four restricted units afforded, affordable to 30% income households, to the extent that, but I noticed that there's no, because this is a DRP, there's, there are no further benefits provided aside from transportation passes within the area where might residents seeking any services after school, Big Brother, Big Sister, what, what services are available in the vicinity of that project?
Well, the community benefits application requires that there be additional fees paid. So, I go back to the slide here. There will, there will be a parks and recreation fee of approximately $314,000 that needs to be paid to the city, and a transportation impact fee along with a transportation demand management plan. In terms of services in the immediate area, the applicant's not required to make specific connections to maybe nearby services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, it's your turn. Thank you, staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dave Rand, I'm Brewster Goldsmith and Delvec, here tonight representing La Terra Development Company, the applicant of the proposed project. This is La Terra's third project in the city of Santa Monica. You may recall two similarly sized and scaled mixed-use buildings at Cloverfield and Broadway. So, this is a different location, but similar concept. La Terra's vision for this site, as it was for their other two projects, is to bring the highest caliber project, the highest caliber of architecture, truly enliven the streetscape, improve the neighborhood, and build a building that will provide much-needed housing that's in scale and in keeping with the surrounding community. When this project went before the Architectural Review Board, it was extremely well-received because it's something different. It stood out as unique. The perforated metal panel that you see on the upper levels was of particular interest in defining this as a really iconic symbol at this intersection that will transform this whole immediate area. And Patrick Thai, who's going to follow me and give you a little more overview of the building and his design intent, made certain to incorporate livable spaces, large courtyards, generous open spaces, so this can be a truly a great building, not just for passersby, but for people who live in it as well. As Ms. Page mentioned, the building is completely code compliant. There are no exceptions or modifications of any kind being sought. This is straight down the line, consistent with the zoning code. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Patrick Thai. I just want to add, there was a, 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 a letter from the surround, the nearby church raising concerns about construction impacts. Wanted to let the commission know that my client had the opportunity to sit down with the church today, go over in detail their construction plans, walk through the construction mitigation measures and requirements, and establish a relationship and a point of contact so that the project can be a good neighbor as it goes through its construction phase. Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks, Dave, for the nice intro, and thanks, Grace, for the great presentation. I'm here tonight with the landscape architect, Scott Baker, from Realm, and the development team, Randall Reel and Linda Norrington, who are also available to answer any questions that you have. I think Grace and Dave covered most of the facts, so I won't, I won't do that again. I'll, I'll talk mostly about the, the architecture and the ideas behind the project. So, the location we talked about, and really for us, it was about having a connection to the, to the street. We have three kind of main ideas that we were pursuing. One was this idea of just keeping the building really simple. So, how did we do that? We wanted to keep the building simple in its form and, and the use of materials. So, the building essentially, it's a, it's a larger building on, on a good-sized site, so we wanted to break it down into two smaller buildings. So, breaking up the mass was something that we were very much interested in, and we did this, this idea of prosody, creating, creating openings. We did that with this layered facade that we created, and then opening up the, the building with the use of this green space. So, we have this open space, this courtyard space that exists on two levels within the building, creating a void, allowing for air and light to enter the building and making this strong connection to the street. And then, thirdly, we were very much interested in how one would experience the building as they walk along the sidewalk. So, this idea of the pedestrian experience, the building at the ground level is set back at least five feet, up to 12 feet, all along the sidewalk. And then, we create this arcade. So, the idea of walking between the building and this colonnade, we think creates kind of a wonderful experience for the, for the pedestrians. So, these renderings kind of just, just show how we do that. The colonnade starts off being kind of regular and more orderly on the two ends of the building, and as they come together at the corner, they become more eccentric. So, a very simple move, but we're kind of celebrating the corner with this use of the colonnade. This diagram shows how the building at the ground level is set back at least five feet and in the space between the colonnade and the storefront. Building facts, which I think have pretty much been covered to date, and then I won't get into the, the plans, but these are the two lower-level, subterranean parking levels. At ground level, we have 10,000 square feet of commercial space, half of which is, will be designated for a restaurant, we think, the other half for retail. The purple indicates the amenities of the building for the residents. And I just want to make a few more comments.
Yeah, what else did you have to say on this issue?
What's that?
What else did you have to say?
A few more comments. Solar at the roof, we have more than needed. We're, we're required to have 3,600 square feet. We have almost 4,000. So, we have more solar than needed. EV stations, we're required to have two. We have sevens, we have five more than needed. Bike parking, we have more than enough short-term, which is all located at the ground level, and then the long-term is located in the two lower levels of parking. And we have, we're required to have 12 short-term, and we have 28 short-term bike parking spaces. We've got that covered. Materials, we mentioned before, simple material palette, and I think I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions?
I'm not sure you're the one to ask, but I read the church-slash-schools letter, and I understand you met with them today. How was the use of the alley for construction vehicles resolved with its being the drop-off point for the school? Or did you?
Hi. He...
Could you tell us your name, please?
Randall Reel with La Terra Development. So, yeah, we talked about, they have a particular route worked out for the, for the people to pick up the kids. It's a, it's an eastbound route, so they enter off of, I believe, Harvard and drive through the alley and then out onto Yale and exit, and I think they stop somewhere along the way. There's some parking spaces where they can pick up kids. So, he explained the whole process, and he, he said, "Yeah, no, I don't, I, I expect that the occasional, there might be a lane closure for a certain period of time because they're doing construction." He said, "I, I understand that. I just wanted to understand that the alley wouldn't be blocked for, you know, completely shut down for a long period of time." He said, "Absolutely not. We couldn't do that if we wanted to." Kind of walked him through the process and how, how the construction guidelines and provisions govern, govern that to a large degree. He also expressed his thoughts about, "Oh, if it does, there's a significant dust mitigation that will happen. Hopefully, it won't be nearly as bad as you might be imagining now." And he said, "Noise, we have to close windows." He said, "We can help, we can get you some filters and air conditioning, portable air conditioning, stuff like that." He, "Oh, great, great, you know, that'd be really helpful. It's just important to have a line of communication so we can talk to each other as everything, as everything progresses and, you know, things come out."
So, presumably, you will be timing your construction vehicle arrivals to be a different time for when the school drop-off is happening?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I would like to follow up, Mr. Reel. I, I have a sequence of questions. What do you, what do you anticipate the rents in this building being?
Rental rates?
Yeah.
Well, they range from, there's studio, we're talking about residential, not so much the retail. Okay, the residential rates for market rate, I think the, the very low affordable is mandated, so, okay, everyone knows it does. From in the 2,000 range to the high threes, somewhere, somewhere in that range?
That's the studio?
Or maybe in the hi, high teens to, to...
That's the studio?
Mid-threes.
That's the studio?
No, that's for the entire...
So, you think the top rent that you'll be charging in this building is a high $3,000?
Somewhere in that range.
$3,800, $4,000, something in that order?
Yeah, they're, they're small units, so it's, yeah, it's hard to get.
I see. If, you know, the TDM that was inserted into the code is now, some years ago since we draw it up, drew it up, if we'd asked, would you have put in more bike parking spots?
More bike parking?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'd have to go through the plan, because every time you, you know, these, these things are like a Swiss watch. You add one thing, and then five other things get shifted around.
There's no, for example, scooter parking in there at the moment, and scooters are now a big...
They may not be around much longer.
No, the scooters are here for all time. You know, I just, what struck me about the TDM is how what is in there is not relevant in the same way as it was a few years ago to the way people live today. That must have struck you as well.
Well, our experience in the projects that we, that we survey, and our, our management company is GrayStar, and they manage a tremendous amount of buildings throughout LA from, you know, Santa Monica to Burbank, and the bike parking is generally underutilized in every jurisdiction from an operational standpoint.
And yet, you're not in Santa Monica yet, are you?
No, no, in every jurisdiction, from Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Los Angeles, generally, generally in the buildings that we have data on, that, that, that's the case. But as far as a policy issue and increasing bike parking, I don't know, I haven't studied that in, in detail.
And let's go to the affordability. You've got four units in this building that are in the affordable range. You're not intending to come back and ask us to change that level at some stage, are you?
No way.
All right, thank you. And, oh, Patrick, let me just ask you, there are no bedrooms without windows in this project, are there?
Absolutely not.
Great. Because that, that is of interest to all of us.
All right. Sean has a question?
I have, I have two, two questions, following up on Commissioner Lambert's question about the, about the, the alley, and this may be more appropriately directed to staff. I, I assume, and I will imagine my voice going up at the end as a question, that the, the church-school does not have a CUP for its operations, that construction could potentially push it to have to work around, right? In terms of their east, their, their west-to-east drop-off pattern, I just hope that there won't be a knock-on effect in terms of when construction occurs, that, that the church is put in a position that it doesn't want to be in relative to its own obligations to the city.
I, I don't know about the permitting status of the school and church. We didn't really look that up, but I can share with you the city's construction mitigation plan review process. We have tightened that up significantly over the past year. It sort of was necessitated by the projects under construction at Lincoln throughout the downtown that we're seeing. So, the, there is a condition on this permit that there be a construction mitigation plan that's approved before the building permit is issued. It's a very extensive process that they have to go through that involves review by planning, the city traffic engineer, mobility, and public works. We all work collaboratively together. And they are required, just to give you an example of some of the, the elements of that construction mitigation plan, they have to have a truck routing and staging plan, so a temporary traffic control plan if there's use of the right-of-way for construction traffic. We do have authorized hall routes and truck routes throughout the city where trucks can go and they can't go. We have construction site parking and staging plans, so we do not allow construction workers to park in the neighborhood or at, you know, so they have to have a plan as to where people are going to park, and we strongly encourage the shuttling of workers. We, you know, so we work very carefully on that. They have to have a demolition equipment and waste plan. They have to have a plan and let us know if there's proposals to close sidewalks or streets. We have pushed back very strongly on that. It's definitely a last resort sort of thing, so we definitely push very hard in terms of justification for closure of sidewalk, of bike lanes, of streets, you know, and that it be done, you know, only if absolutely necessary and for as minimal a time as possible. They have to provide a noise reduction plan, a neighborhood notification plan, including a public contact person, you know, for the project at all hours of the day, you know, when construction is happening. And then, obviously, if they are asking for an after-hours construction permit, that is reviewed by building and safety, and that is not a guarantee. And again, I want to emphasize the street sidewalk, you know, closure, none of that is a guarantee. We have to make sure, and certainly, you know, in this case, if it's an alley that's used by a use like a church, and it's their pick-up and drop-off, we will look at that very carefully and make sure that that's not impacted by, by the activities.
Great, thank you. And then, my, my second question, and again, it's an informational one, and I, I think it's, I think it's a terrific project. Given the public, the, the public comment that we'd heard in writing, and I don't know what we'll hear from the public, when is the, at what point on perhaps a regular basis does the, do the traffic patterns get reviewed in the neighborhood as a result of new, new projects coming in? And I'm particularly thinking, following on Commissioner McKinnon's question and having, having bicycled in the area of, you know, having some concern that we are being proactive as a city to make sure that there are safe bike routes, particularly between this project and 26 Burgomot Expo Line and other, I'm sorry? Broadway's a major bike route. Broadway's, right, so getting, making sure that those streets are, are safe, given the comments that we received in writing.
Right, so I, I think we want to make sure that we, you know, that there's, there've been letters about requirements for a traffic study. To be clear, this project qualifies for statutory exemption under SEQUA, so a, a traffic study is not required in this regard. I think the question you're asking really is about circulation to and from the site, and that's really part of, you know, the city's broader mobility planning efforts, you know, that are laid out in the Bicycle Action Plan and are taken on by our Mobility Division in terms of looking at network completion, both for pedestrians and bicycles. And certainly, a key part of that is always looking at, you know, where are our safe routes for both cyclists and pedestrians to get around, you know, certainly in, in this area. That's something that's looked at more globally and not on a project-by-project basis.
Okay. I, I, again, as a newbie, I would say it, it's always good to see where the, what the, what the safe streets, Vision Zero data looks like in context.
Yeah, on, on a project basis, we focus more on pushing applicants to think about, you know, where, where they place bicycle parking and pedestrians to really think about how are people getting to and from the site? How is circulation happening internally from the site? And bicycles as well. We actually do have requirements in the code that bike parking be provided in a convenient place, it's not thrown in, you know, Level Four of the corner of the subterranean parking garage, you know, so that's, those are the sorts of things that we work with applicants on as part of the review process and also as part of the plan check process. on as part of their view process and also as part of the plan check process.
Um, are there any other questions or shall we move on to the public?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So, Patrick, I'm looking at your roof plan and I see a lot of white space that's just begging for solar collectors. And I'm glad to see that you are 4,000 square feet. Um, but it would be very easy to add another 2,000 square feet and start pushing that up. Um, do you think your client would accept that?
I think they'd be open to it. Yeah, I, I don't know if we could fit that much, but we, we could, I think we could fit a little bit more.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at it. I, I, it would be very easy to go another 2,000. In other words, 50% more, so.
Well, let's ask the client. Randall?
We need to make sure there's room for everything else, like air conditioners and vents, so.
Well, it's, it's all laid out here. You can just look at this drawing and that's, 2,000 more square feet would not be hard. It would be easily done. I mean...
Yeah, in terms of, you know, whether it's 2,000 or 1,500 or 3,500, it's hard to say without getting into construction documents because there's, um, structural, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on, on the roof. Um, however, that being said, the solar is beneficial to us. I mean, we want it as much as anyone else does because it helps, helps from an operational standpoint. So if we can fit, uh, more solar, you know, and not, you know, cause a major structural issue or have to, you know, increase the cost of the building in some exorbitant way, absolutely want to do that. That's, that's our prerogative to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're ready to hear from our members of the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And they are Harriet Moran and Hannah Levy. Ms. Moran? And then Ms. Levy can be ready when she's done.
Members of the council, I live on an adjacent, I don't live on an adjacent, my, my, I, I own an adjacent parcel which is west of the church and school. And I have terrible impact upon this neighboring, uh, development, which is owned by the same people that are building this development. I understand she says, uh, the lady here, I forgot her name, I'm sorry. But I understand she said there was one pro, pro letter set by the neighboring, a property owner on the west. They are also the owners. I've lived in Santa Monica for over 60 years. And I know it's, uh, my kids go, go, went to school with these people. I graduate. And I've had, because of that west owner, Mr. Mark, Mark Visius and Mr. Roki Rodriguez, I know, uh, my father had to, uh, sustain impact to his, to his fence. And just recently, I sustained an impact to, by fourplex coming from that directional traffic of the school and the church, right into my building, which caused a major liability issue. And it could have resulted in a death. So, the, the owners actually own all the way to Bundy, what I realize, and also own the building on, on Fox. I, I know this family well. I know, and it's not, it's not to, it's not to, I applaud their efforts because I understand he is, uh, he accomplished the American immigrant dream, of which I am also a part of. I, I managed to maintain and respect the efforts of my mother and father that I managed to buy that, what was a fiveplex. So, I, I have had, I mean, this traffic condition is, you, you're, I don't know what you don't see or because you don't, you're not there all the time, but I've had to physically, because the adjacent building in the...
Are you the same architect of the gray building?
I'm sorry, uh, you just have to address us.
Oh, sorry. Well, the adjacent building is a great, uh, is almost looking like a three-story building. And it has a, it also has, uh, what do you call it, common school learning. And it also has, um, a prosthetic chiropractic, uh, what do you call it, office. So they, they back in at a perpendicular direction. They, it's supposed to be compact parking, but of course that doesn't get enforced. So the compact parking, if you have an SUV parked in the last stall adjacent to the, uh, whatever it is, that, that, um, industrial, whatever, the generator, whatever.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, no? Yes? There's a question for you.
You referred to some impacts. Are you talking about cars crashing into your building? What impacts are you talking about cars?
Yeah, that's impact. And it was also because I was told by one of your staff, a, a city employee, that there was a hostile encroachment conducted on the corner of my lot. It was 10 feet set, setback. So increased the possibility of a car turning, coming in from Harvard, going, going east, turning right, which they often do because my parking is open. So they naturally pick up their kids. And one lady just, uh, went zip really fast because there was a wider alley. Instead of being 15 feet, it was 20 feet. I understand there, there are, what do you call it, my bollard, which wasn't there. You had placed, uh, no parking in alley side, which was almost 10 feet part of my, my property. And that, that owner, that car even got parking tickets. And when he's actually on my, when I see after the impact, I, I did research on the, on the plot plan of my car. And so, I don't know, it's just, I, to, to, to actually handle somebody's steering wheel because they're unable to turn and not, as soon as we built a larger bollard, you could see that, they could see the, uh, red parking lot, parking light.
Thank you.
Plastic.
Jason has a question for you.
Yeah, when you were describing the, you are at least beginning to describe the, the problems resulting from oversized cars parking in the compact spot, does that relate to the same problem that you just described or is that a separate problem?
That's the same problem, meaning...
Same problem.
How, how...
The same as what you just described? Or, or is there a problem that you didn't get to?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, they, the, the bollard was, was added later.
Thank you.
Because it was impacting the fourth parking space of my tenant.
Thank you. Um, all right. Thank you very much. Uh, our next speaker is Harriet Levy.
Oh.
Hannah.
I'm Hannah Levy. And, um, I'm a resident of the Wilmot neighborhood in Santa Monica. And, um, the last time I was here was during the DCP meetings. Um, and I would love to see the upper part of Wilshire and Santa Monica Boulevard be polished, uh, as much as downtown is. And having a building, a new building like this with a really excellent architect, would liven up that part of the neighborhood. And I'm excited about it. Um, the, uh, slice in the building where there's a courtyard and this green space is part of the face of the building that you would see when you drive by and when you're walking down the street would definitely make a positive impact. Um, and this setback from the street also would have a nice walking space. So I'm excited to see any new buildings in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, uh, that brings us, are there any further questions of staff or...
I have questions of the applicant and the applicant has an opportunity to respond, right?
I do.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, no rebuttal needed. Just to point clarification that the other builder, property owner that was referenced in public comment is, is Roke and Mark. That's a different company than, than La Terra, uh, the applicant of this proposed project.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Rand, in the past, we've talked about, uh, the opportunity for developers to offer connections to extremely low-income residents in the projects to city services. Is that a possibility here?
Yes, we'd accept that condition.
Yeah, or you'd be willing to do it as a part of the, the project description?
Correct. Yes, exactly. As, as has been done in the past.
Great. And, um, and would you be willing to include language as part of the project description, uh, the issue that Commissioner Fonda Benardi, Benardi raised about a greater amount of roof area serving the, the solar collectors?
We would be open to, to general language, excuse me, uh, reflecting and intent to maximize the coverage. I'd be hesitant to agree to a prescriptive condition mandating a specific square footage amount when we haven't had a chance to really program that into the roof, given we have open space as well as mechanical equipment needs on the roof.
Great. And I also have a question, uh, this design related. So perhaps Mr. Ty?
Definitely not me.
Good. So, hello. Uh, I, I appreciate the, the, the design idea here of coming at this with, uh, you know, creating a simple, elegant, uh, uh, design. And, uh, I, I don't want to interfere with that, but I also see an opportunity potentially, and I want to get your thoughts on it, uh, to make some changes related to the perforated metal, uh, that would create the illusion of varied height, uh, for the buildings, particularly when you're looking at the, you know, they, they come across as distinctly different structures. Uh, and varying the height along the boulevards is one of the goals of the loose. Uh, do you see an opportunity within that to at least create the illusion of, of a change in height?
Uh, we, we, we could look at it. Again, the, I think the strength of the building is, is the simplicity of the massing. And then, um, the architecture is further enhanced with the, the detailing. Um, quite honestly, I think if we start making all changes in the height, I think it's going to ta, take away from that. We could cer, we could certainly look at it though. Um, I think I would hesitate to have, to have all different heights in this building, but, um, maybe there's a slight difference between the two volumes. Maybe that, that could help, uh, distinguish the two and differentiate the heights that way.
You think you have the, the flexibility to do that?
Yeah, we could look at it.
Great. Thank you.
What does that mean? What did you mean by flex, you know, varying the volumes?
Well, the building, the building is, uh, broken down into two, two pieces. Um, so maybe one could be slightly higher than the other. I, I think, I think what I would hesitate to do would, to start having all kinds of different heights. I think it would get messy and, uh, take away from this, the, the clarity of, of the building the way it is.
So you're prepared to vary the height of one of the buildings or one element of the building?
Slightly.
And what do you mean by slightly? Are we talking two, three feet or?
Well, I, I'd have to look at where we are with heights, maximum height, allowable height.
I see.
The parapets need to be a certain height, uh, to conceal what's on the roof. So maybe one parapet is slightly higher than the other.
I think you're going to be told that's not possible. Just thinking in that direction.
What's that?
I think, just give it to your lawyer and we'll just see how it's actually going to work out. Mr. Rand, what are your thoughts on this issue?
So, I, I would be concerned about a, there's no way to go up, as we know. We're capped at 36 feet and we need every inch of that for livability, for quality retail. Um, I would be hesitant to go the only way in which we could go down on a tier-two project, which is down. So differentiating the building heights only means we have to cl, clip the floor-to-floors, which could, uh, compromise the building. What I would suggest is if it would be, oh, the commission would be open to it, is a condition instructing the architectural review board to potentially look at variation. Um, but we would not be open to any kind of condition that would reduce the height of portion of the volume of the building.
Um, I, um, I just wanted to say about that, I really appreciate the simplicity of this building. And I don't know if I could support suggestions that would push it towards the Lego building problem that we have in the city. And so I'm not sure I would be in favor of that anyway. Um, but I do have, uh, a question. Um, when I spoke with Randall, we talked a lot about the arcade and the pedestrian realm. And I was saying that, uh, I was disappointed the way the planter blocks the, uh, passageway through the arcade. And then when I made my site visit and I realized that the building next door was a newer building that also had the same setback or a similar setback, and that there's a stairwell in between in that setback, uh, we're kind of losing the whole kind of broad goal we have of asking for those ground floor setbacks, which is to increase the pedestrian realm and create a more flowing area on the ground. And, uh, so basically, before I was just talking about the planter, but now I see that stairwell. And I would, you know, we talked about when we're asking for these setbacks that incrementally, over time, as more buildings are redeveloped, they will all begin to have a wider sidewalk and will have a better pedestrian realm throughout the city. And of course, my personal objection was the zigzag effect and creating those dark little dents in buildings along the pedestrian right-of-way. And we have an opportunity here to avoid the zigzag effect and make a real arcade that will go beyond this building into the next property. So, is that, I mean, I guess that's not really a question. That's a comment that I want to hear what you have to say about.
Can I, can I ask you to pause one second? I actually don't understand what you're saying. You, you want more of an arcade? You want less of an arcade?
I don't want the arcade blocked by a stairwell and a planter.
Uh-huh. The stairwell on the west end.
Right, that I see in the model.
The middle section that separates city buildings.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, the, um, I, I'm, we're totally in agreement on this one.
Oh, that's so nice.
We've, uh, in one of the exhibits, we've already, uh, pulled the planter back, sucked it up against the building to get it...
Right.
As, as much out of the way as possible and still maintain a little bit of green there. We're also going to, because this is a structural matter as well, that, that segment is a sheer wall, which we really don't want because that interferes with the retail, the visibility and the light coming and going from that space. So, we're going to try to limit that. That's something where we've already gone to our structural journey. We're going to try to limit that and maybe confine it to two, one to two-foot width, uh, steer walls, which will open that up. And also even, uh, make that into two smaller planners instead of one longer planter. Some version of that that we can do because I want to make it as, you know, is, is unobtrusive as, as possible through that whole, well, it helps with what you, what you'd like to achieve and also helps with the retail.
Well, the stairway is probably a bigger problem, just structurally, uh...
Oh, as you enter from the street? Oh, in the corner. Okay, I was talking, I'm talking about this middle section right now.
Right. I was saying that we had discussed the middle section, but then after I made my site visit, then I realized there was another opportunity that is impacted by the stairwell at the corner.
Yeah, that's a code issue.
It has to be all the way to the front like that? It can't be...
I have to defer because stairwells and accessors are basically firelight safety driven.
It doesn't have to be.
We can look at it.
Good answer. All right. Uh, well, uh, we will ask you to do that, I think. Um, Sean Landers has a question.
I, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
Yeah, can wait.
I am asking this as someone who has done a lot of alley drop-off and pickup, uh, at schools. Um, and I'm looking at the, I'm living at the over, I'm looking at the overhead, uh, photo. And then again, at the, um, looking for a page number here, but I'm looking at the, at the alleys, at the alley and what's happening on the other side of the alley. And I'm noticing that the access to the garage is going to involve a lot of people driving, uh, in from Yale and out to Yale, particularly based on the angle. Um, and particularly in the morning, you're going to have people exiting the building and merging with your school drop-off. Um, so my question is, uh, whether or not you would be open to keeping an eye on that and potentially, um, to the extent that problems may arise, uh, looking at traffic calming options in the alley, uh, both along the side of your building, but also west of the building because the, the school drop-off folks are going to be entering from, what is that, Stanford? Um, so...
Harvard.
From Harvard, excuse me. Um, and I'm, what I'm imagining is that there's going to be a line of people driving...
And I'm, what I'm imagining is that there's going to be a line of people driving on the right, right hand side of the alley and you're going to have folks merging into that line and it's not going to be pretty around eight AM. And there may be some, you may have some opportunities, once you're past construction, to look at that alley and see how, whether there's some traffic calming there that can sort of help people make their way through. Would you be open to that?
Traffic calming, what is it?
Well, I don't know whether it means, you know, potentially looking at the way, I don't know what could be done in the alley to.
Well.
Well, I'm just, I'm worried about, I'm worried about what a previous commenter called impacts.
I'd like to add to Commissioner Landis's question. It's more about entering and exiting the building.
Yeah.
You've actually designed it so there's only one way in and one way out for the cars. Is it possible to design it so that there is more than one way in or out? Because what he's saying is the impact is very focused. So.
Well, just speaking generally first about the the neighbor in the alley, I mean, they can't stop, they're not going to be able to stop the car in the alley, that's against the law, you know, any more than they can stop in the middle of Santa Monica Boulevard, it's just going to function just like a small street. Which will work out fine, you know, we only need it for that amount of time, that two seconds or three seconds it takes you to get from the driveway over to Yale or over to Harvard and we'll both be doing that and we'll share it. If they, we have a problem where there, what usually happens on another property where we're neighbors with the school, usually happens is when they break the rules. And he said that too, we talked about it, he's a nice guy, I think we're going to end up being friends and work together operationally very well. But the, if they stop and they back up, they don't pull into the parking slots, which they have available, that they're supposed to pull into. Now the kids drop off, they get impatient, or they're late for work themselves. That's when you run into issues and that becomes more of an operational management issue. And and that's why it's important to, you know, establish a relationship with them now so that we can have a continuing dialogue and work through those operational matters.
Great, I'm not trying to be prescriptive, but just you asked what I meant by calming. So for example, when you have a car exiting, coming up that ramp, preparing to exit, you could have a sensor that triggers a flashing light facing westbound, facing both sides actually, so that any car in the alley says, oh, wait a second, I need to pay attention because something's happening here, they slow down and then you avoid that kind, and particularly with drop off and pickup. As a parent, you know, kids, the kids are screaming, the phone's ringing, somebody's watching something on TV and you need a flashing light to tell you to say, hey, take a break.
I have an eight year old. The convex mirrors as well.
That's right, exactly, exactly, thank you.
That's a good.
Amy.
Randall, don't go anywhere, I wanted to ask you about the existing businesses at this development. My husband had a small office around the corner for many years and would visit this complex and visit many of the businesses. There are really unique kind of microcosm of businesses and histories. Are they all being displaced? Is there any opportunity for them to come back? Are you thinking about a way to try and accommodate them?
Yeah, I mean, most of, most of them, some of them are, were planning on going out of business anyway and this just was convenient for them. Everyone's got a different story, but but to your point, setting up a meeting with the Japanese restaurant to ask them if they would like to come back in. Because it's a great place, it would be conducive and and maybe some of the others too, I just, just starting with them they seem to express an interest to one of our management, management people. But we're replacing almost the same square footage of retail.
Well, that's what it looked like and the same number of, you know, not exactly the same number of spaces, but it, right, similar, so.
Similar, yeah, and so it is indeed going to be a neighborhood serving, you know, it's adequately parked. There'd be multiple different types of retail uses that serve the neighborhood. Hopefully some food use, which is very similar to what's there now. And different variety of food use and hopefully a nice medium, small sized restaurant on the corner.
So I, I won't ask you to agree to something for the project, but I think it, I think it would be great for, to the extent that we can have some of those businesses back and they want to be back, it would be great.
We'd like that too.
And can I just clarify too, this setback in the front, this twelve to seven foot setback is, it's not a development standard that that you're complying with, that is a choice to set the building back?
Will we increase the setback closer to Yale?
Can you speak into the mic?
Sorry, we increased the setback closer to Yale to create covered kind of a plaza type space. Because generally what's going to happen, even though you see that's in yellow now on your, on your sheet, every, every restaurant, potential food use tenant has their own agenda, a lot of them outdoor, indoor, outdoor space is very popular now, they're going to ask us when they get to the point of TI, tenant improvements, to pull back some of those window walls and do all kinds of different things to create that space. So I think that'll end up changing, but that is the idea to create a place for tables sit outside.
So you're saying that front wall could pull back even further?
Yeah, and as you TI each, as you TI each individual space, that'll come up, particularly with the food use, and that's the feed route we're getting from the retail brokers in the market.
Okay. I also noticed there was a bathroom missing from the restaurant on the far west side. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you something based on what Amy was just talking about. We also at our meeting discussed the existing businesses and the fact that it was a really kind of great mix of really neighborhood serving places. And I was thinking about it some more and I was wondering if it would be a big problem for you if we were, we put some sort of limit on the length of each individual storefront to make sure they were smaller and perhaps allowing more neighborhoody hair salons and not all big fancy restaurants. I think the big fancy restaurant thing is kind of not really appropriate for here and that's, you know, this is a real, this is a neighborhood that needs that other stuff that's really not around.
Well, I can say the retail market and your desires are completely in accord right now. Even if we wanted a tarn roses, you know, in the corner, I mean, personally, I'd love that, but they're just not going to come here. I have, you've got to be realistic, it's just not the location that they would, they would be in. So what we're, oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
The project would be limited to restaurants no more, no larger than twenty five hundred square feet because of the parking demands. So there wouldn't be any one single restaurant larger than that.
So we don't have to worry about that aspect. Okay, I just, you know, the whole idea of the hair salon, the yoga studio, the dry cleaners, it was really good before.
The market is for much smaller spaces right now, seven hundred to twelve hundred square feet.
So hopefully you'll have to bring your rents way down so that those small businesses can move in. All right. Are there more questions? We do, I just want to bring up, have a late chat from Mr. Andrew Hoyer.
I move that we hear the late chat for, I think it's a minute, is the conventional thing.
All in favor? Mr. Hoyer.
Thank you very much, I'll be very brief, my name's Andrew Hoyer, I'm the Government Affairs Officer for Santa Monica Mid-City Neighbors. There's actually some things I like in this project, I did notice that they have at least forty percent two and three bedrooms, which I was pushing for fifty percent downtown. So at least they're exceeding that, they have fewer studios than than they're allowed to have. So there are some good things, one of our former members doesn't like the massing. To me, it looks okay, looks like a maintenance nightmare. And my last thing was about the retail, I swung by today, that's why I was late. We have currently one, two, three, four, five, six, seven retail businesses plus three restaurants. And it seems like, from what I see in the plans, we're going to lose some of that. And so the other issue is also what is the rent going to be? If we could keep the rents per square foot closer to what they're currently paying, that's going to make it a thriving location. So my greatest concern is the loss of the community serving retail that you were just discussing, such as the barber shop, the Lithuanian deli, the aquarium and the yoga studio. So so things like that are my greatest concerns, the community serving businesses, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have another question or are you ready for comments?
I've got a couple of questions and then we'll go to comments. So, Mr. Randall? That's actually Mr. Real, isn't it? What did you mean that these businesses were ready to go out of business?
Well, one of them already has since we've owned the property, I think it's the Dragon, forgive me if I get the name wrong. They shut down. And I'd have to, I can go through the list, but we've been, we just started talking to the tenants. They all have termination clauses in their leases with sixty or ninety days' notice. So not all, not all businesses are doing well and you know, when they're right on the verge, they, a lot of the feedback is, hey, no problem. We were, you know, really debating whether we wanted to stay here and this is a way to get out of the lease without, you know, without having to pay money to get out of the lease.
So do you anticipate a couple of businesses coming back at tops?
You know, I don't know, you know, the biggest challenge with that isn't so much even the rent, surprisingly, it's the time. So they have to, obviously it has to be built and that takes, I don't know, eighteen to twenty four months. And they have to leave or simply go out of business for two years and then come back.
So the practicality is that it's unlikely that these businesses will return?
I've, yeah, I've, I've done this in multiple projects with tenants where we had, you know, sixty tenants in a particular project and wanted a lot of them to come back and they, even if they wanted to, they simply couldn't afford to, they generally ended up finding a new space and moving on and, you know, we helped with that and made it smooth.
So I just want to clarify, in terms of the arcade effect that the chair was so interested in, will you be moving to create a walkable arcade right along that Santa Monica facing part of the boulevard?
Yeah, well, I hope, I hope that it is the way.
So that's number one, and will you be discussing with the architect moving the stairway back to facilitate that?
Yeah, that one, I think we covered, Patrick said he'd study it, it's generally a fire life safety and code driven.
Well, I'm sure having a stairway.
On the stairway itself.
Yeah.
But on that, on the center section, that's where all my dialogue about how we had the same idea and we're trying to pull that back and limit it because.
And so is that a green wall or just vegetation?
It's, it's, we, the renderings depicted some sort of bamboo type material, we will absolutely not be using that because it takes too much water and it's a maintenance problem. It'll probably be something much more subtle than what's in this particular rendering, as far as the plant materials go.
I guess what I'm driving at, is it going to be almost an impenetrable wall of green that you see on a lot of buildings these days? Or will it be kind of an open vegetative thing?
Open.
Right, okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So to get back to the movement of the exit stair at the street. So as you know, these projects are very much driven by the parking and the layout of the parking. If we were to move the stair back, it would, it was, quite frankly, would screw up, screw up the parking. I think maybe a couple of feet, but if we go more than that, we're gonna.
So I'd take a couple of feet, I was here one night with that building at the corner of Fourteenth and Santa Monica where we spent three hours on six inches. No, I'm serious, a couple of feet would add to the pedestrian impact quite a lot. I mean, is that feasible?
That's why I'm, that's why I'm up here to tell you, to tell you the truth, I, I, there isn't, the issue is the, is the parking layout. And if we were to move the stair tower back, it would be in the turning radius, which I don't have all that info in front of me.
But you could look at it.
So I can't give you the straight answer, but we'll look at it.
So Chair, if that's not another question, I'd be prepared to move the motion.
I have a couple other points that I just wanted to share, they're quick.
Would you want me to move?
I'm happy to second.
Really, we're in agreement?
You haven't heard the motion yet.
Well, I just think that's cooperation to the nth level, but I move that we approve Development Review Permit eighteen ENT zero zero three eight and approve the official statement of official action. I've got a couple of things noted down here on the way through. Mr. Rand agreed to the, I guess now, standard connection to social service element to go into the statement of official action. I think the applicant agreed to look at more solar coverage for the roof. I think the applicant agreed that the IRB could take a close look at the matching of volumes on the two buildings. The applicant agreed to move the center element back to facilitate the pedestrian walkway. The applicant, or at least the architect, did suggest that he would look at the staircase coming down and it's where it hits the street. Was there anything I missed at this stage? And then the alley was also.
I think we heard flashing lights, because I don't, traffic coming, I feel like the alley is self-traffic calming.
Some other word besides calming, traffic coherence?
That sort of thing is typically reviewed with, because the the mirrors and warning lights are, they're not just put on every project just for the heck of it, like it's, there are reasons for doing that. So I think we could signal that, you know, that that's an element of a project to be reviewed as part of the plan check, you know, if there are conflicts with traffic in the alley. I mean, it is an alley, our code requires that you take access from the alley, so the fact that cars are on the alley is not an unusual thing and that vehicles use it, this is not such a large project that, you know, the staff foresaw this as, as an issue in terms of use of the alley. So I'm not sure that requiring it is, you know, quite the appropriate step. But we might suggest that, you know, staff review that with the applicant as part of the, as part of the plan check.
That could be incorporated into the motion, that staff review egress.
Egress from the project with, in combination with the existing circulation in the alley.
And the school, yeah.
Well, not so much the school. The school could change. So, okay, so that's where we stand at the moment, so.
I just had two small notes for ARB, just because it's a, an incomplete conceptual plan and I just wanted to make sure that they looked at the way the screening is attached in part of the building to make sure that it's not a thing that will collect dirt and mud and become an unsightly screen. And I'm sure the architect is thinking about that anyway, but, you know, and also just because the edges are so unfinished in these drawings to think about that so it doesn't look like some material was just nailed on, just because it's so incomplete.
Is that about the quality of the screening material?
More, it's more about the attachment and finishes and that they are functional and not, that they don't collect debris and dirt.
Is that direction to ARB or?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner McKenna is going to ask.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, you had a second thing?
Also, I don't know if we can put a condition like this or if this is more of a description, project description thing, but this idea of these neighborhood serving uses and maybe these businesses, a lot of them moved away or had, were going out of business or were aging out of the business time of their life or whatever it was. But we still need those kinds of things there and we want to make sure it's not too hip and groovy for its own good. So that idea of neighborhood serving, if that can be in the project description? Well. I don't.
Yeah, it's.
No.
As part of, so as part of, because it's on a loose boulevard, there's an active use requirement that commercial districts, so what's prohibited is residential and offices with the, with, you know, with some exceptions. But the, there's an active orientation requirement. And of course, the use table, this is the mixed use boulevard low zone, so there, as you know, the, when we did the zoning ordinance update, there was a pretty careful review of what's allowed on the ground floor, what requires, what triggers a CUP if it goes over a certain size and what have you. So I think that was the commission's attempt to make sure that we have some neighborhood serving, you know, active uses at the ground floor. I, I think it would be outside the scope of this permit to require something like that.
Hold on a second, I'm going to ask Commissioner Anderson, because she's been sitting patiently there for a while.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of the conditions that you were adding. So one was about the volumes, the building volumes?
Well, it was a direction to ARB to have a look at.
Okay, so direction to ARB?
Yes.
And this, the stairwell on the west end, was that also a direction to ARB?
Yes, because we're hearing from the architect that it may not be feasible.
Right, so it was an exploration?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't want to direct it, but it would be great if even, if you get a foot. I don't want to direct it, but it would be great if even, if you get a foot, you've done well. If you've got two feet, that's great, but the architect's indicating that may not be possible.
Okay, so I'm going to officially second then.
Yeah, okay.
May I just ask, so this is something that you're going to send to the ARB and it's going to clarify that the purpose is to open up the arcade through the block and it's not just about moving things around?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Jason?
Yeah, I'm glad that the question about ground floor use came up. Am I right that on the boulevards, the code currently allows, I think it's a particular kind of office, creative office perhaps on the ground floor?
That is correct.
So, and in the past, at least some applicants, I believe working with Mr. Rand, have agreed to put within their project description that the creative office would not be used on the, on the ground floor. So if we could ask, ask the applicant back up to see if they'd be willing to put that within their.
Entirely voluntarily.
The intent is absolutely for restaurant and retail, but we're not going to agree to a condition prohibiting an otherwise permitted use.
Okay, thank you for considering it. And, and also I thank you for the, for the clarifying questions, Commissioner Anderson, on those other aspects of the, the motion. I have a few others. The, the services for the, for the third percent AMI households, where our motion is acknowledging that that is, that the, that the applicant has agreed to make that a part of the project description.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And that within, are we saying regarding the, the roof area used for solar photovoltaic panels, that's a recommendation, a condition that's acting as an unbinding recommendation on the applicant?
Yes, I believe it has to be that way.
And then with the, the, the part of it addressing the varying of the height, I'm, I'm sensitive to, to the, to the concerns raised by, by the Chair regarding how it impacts the overall design goal of, of the project. And so I would like to suggest the wording that we're asking ARB to give special attention to opportunities to vary the perceived height without compromising that overall design goal.
And I think we would both accept that. And it may be when it gets to that, there's no change.
I wanted to follow up on the neighborhood serving uses. I was noted, I guess there's one project in the pipeline that's nearby and this wouldn't necessarily be a condition, but certainly I imagine that the applicant is informally familiar with potential projects coming down the pike in the neighborhood where in the future, and there might be another business that needs to move while they get hit construction. And perhaps you might be, maybe this is too creative by half, but perhaps you might be able to solve their problem if you're a step ahead on your construction and have a neighborhood serving business move a block down into your new project. And so that might enable someone who is a few blocks away and about to lose their lease to, you know, say two years from now, find a new home in the neighborhood without losing them completely. It wouldn't be a condition, but certainly it might be a creative way to find, to keep folks around.
So there's a wonderful, wonderful thing here and that is that both those developers share the same lawyer.
Even better.
Which is a mitzvah to them both, I would say. So I would be more than happy to put them together in a room and build them both at the same time and discuss this. No, in all seriousness, we'll, we'll, I, yeah, we'll make that connection.
Oh, you can almost, yeah.
Terrific, thank you.
So there are a couple of issues that I wanted to highlight before we move to vote on it. And that is the transport demand management element of this. When we passed the zoning code, it was three years ago and much of the lead-up work to that was written a year or two years before it. And circumstances have moved. If you look at the components of this, free onsite shared bicycles, if city bike share is not two blocks away, no reference to scooters. The world of smartphones has moved considerably, but still we've got a screen in the foyer that will tell everyone about the TDM opportunities and so on. And I do think this element of TDM and in particular this TMO, which appears to be a stealth organization that no one has seen or heard of or knows what they do. And we've written so many agreements and so many of these permits that relate to them, but you can't really be sure if they're actually active or doing anything. That needs some work and this struck me when I looked at this. And the second feature about this tonight was that the affordable housing, I think, is too low. And we can't change it here tonight, but it warrants a policy exploration by the city as rapidly as possible because it continues to be that coming into Santa Monica is a very valuable entitlement and opportunity for people. And we as a city should be trying to get more back as we move forward. So there are two areas that, independent of what we do this evening, I would signal that we need to think about as we move forward. On a wider spectrum, when we wrote the zoning code or did the zoning, there was constant uproar here for a number of years. People would come down, we'd have roomful of people screaming at us. Commissioner Kennedy can remember that, I'm sure, extremely well. Nights would drag on until one or two o'clock in the morning. And since the codes have been in place, there is change going on along the boulevards. This particular boulevard has three projects, all of them three stories going up in successive blocks. But they're not the five and six stories that were envisaged at one stage and that they are neighborhood-serving apartments that are bringing more housing in a very scaled way. And tonight, the discussion was about how we got more pedestrian orientation that this building in Hordery contributed quite a lot to. That's an exciting change in development for us. And I do think that element of Santa Monica Boulevard will look interestingly different over the next couple of years as more of this housing goes into place, more of the, the frontage to the street is activated and we get a new look. And so we are now seeing the fruits of putting in place these updated codes that are scalable to the neighborhoods. And this, this, this particular development is an interesting architectural development. I think, Patrick, you've done a very nice job. And it does tick a lot of the boxes that we wanted ticked. For me, there's not enough affordable housing, but beyond that, that's a discussion that we can have. And we should have more solar and so on and so forth. But this is what we envisaged when we set the changes in place.
Can I say something?
You may.
Thank you. I have three comments. One is there's too much parking, but at this point, there's nothing we can do about it because it's in the code. Something we need to look at because I think it's ridiculous how many parking spaces we're providing.
Right, and that was a night where we didn't just have a room, but many, many rooms of people shouting in, so, you know.
And number two, I agree with you about the affordability issue. We've been talking for, since I got here, about looking at the Affordable Housing Production Program and to date, it hasn't come to us. I don't know if the Housing Commission's dealing with it or not. Not only are there too few units, I really have a problem that it's only one and two bedrooms and no three bedrooms for the extremely low income. I have a big problem with that. But there's no way at this point we can control that and I think we should be able to. And the third thing is small businesses. I mean, this, you know, our, our hands are tied. I mean, we, we can't stop this from happening. There is a program in San Francisco that I've referred to the city manager called the Legacy Business Program and it provides rent subsidies for older businesses in the city. And, and potentially if any of these guys wanted to come back to the new project, that sort of rent subsidy program could help them actually afford the new project. We don't have that. So there really, at this point, I don't really see the city having any way to protect neighborhood businesses. And it's a shame. So that's my two cents.
I just wanted to add, I forgot to bring up my usual thing that I always bring up, which is the convenience of the long-term residential bicycle storage. And in a project this small with so much shared open space, perhaps moving some of the bicycles up from the second story of the garage, second story down to the ground floor somewhere inside the building would be a much better way to get people on their bikes.
So I, I would be happy to add a direction to ARB to look at the placement of the long-term bike parking. If that's all right with the secondary? Because then it'll be up to them and to the architect to work that out.
Is that really the purview of the ARB? I, my understanding is that the ARB is really looking at the external design, right? Because I, I would be hesitant to agree to that, right? It's, you know, it's a little bit like the roof. It's a little bit like moving the stairwell, right? Like every little time you try and move something, it impacts something else. So.
But if, you know, you want people to ride their bike to run that errand that's nearby instead of getting in their car, but it takes them fifteen minutes to get their bike out of the second story down basement and through. Well, I mean, it's, it's just a lot of steps. It's, I think it's a big deterrent. I mean, you know. That, I think it makes a big difference in making the bikes used and we're trying to move out of the underutilized bike parking phase.
The, the project does comply with code in that regard and so, you know, unfortunately, there's not the ability, unless the applicant is voluntarily agreeing to do that, there's not really the opportunity.
And I'm willing to bet a lot, because I've had a lot of dealings with Mr. Rand, that that will not be forthcoming, Mr. Rand? On cue.
While we're here, I just wanted to, on the two things that are being added to the project description, just for clarity, because it sounds like you wanted to approve the STOWA tonight. We have two additions to the project description that have wording we've used before. So regarding the case management, the connections to case management services, so to be added to the project description, as volunteered by the applicant, the developer shall coordinate with the city's housing division and an agency to facilitate case management services for the households occupying the affordable units and make every effort to coordinate and complement the services of other similar providers for affordable residents in neighboring area. The case management services shall be in place prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy of the affordable units. And then for the solar, developer shall explore achieving reasonable maximum coverage of the roof area for additional solar energy systems, excluding any areas necessary or required for rooftop equipment, any roof areas necessary for building or equipment maintenance, fire department access and/or other applicable code legally mandated or otherwise, necessary access and/or clearances and rooftop areas designated on the project plans for tenant amenities and/or open space.
That gets to it.
Yeah?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, to address this, the, kind of the big picture as some others have. We received correspondence from nearby residents who were, you know, these were, these, these neighborhood-serving businesses that are currently using the site. They, they're a part of the community and they did not, you know, understandably and, and really we, we should mourn the loss of, you know, these particular uses and all uses that kind of bring people together in our community. In their correspondence, they, they point to the profit motive of the developer and certainly that's why they are here, I'd imagine. I think that's a safe bet. But in terms of what our policies call for and what we are striving for, we're looking for changes to the uses of these sites along the boulevards, changes that serve the public good. And in this case, the, the major public good that we're getting are desperately needed housing units. Moreover, as much as we may love the restaurants, the space that they currently occupy does very, very little and is actually quite toxic to the, the public realm, the, the street area. This strip mall is exactly what we want to be shifting away from on our boulevards and really creating space that, again, people can come together as a community, not just at the site, but also activating the larger expanse of, of the boulevard. So there are, there are important public benefits to the change that we're, that we're being, that's being proposed tonight.
Amy?
I would like to call the question.
Just before we do, just the, the one issue, just on the services that are being provided. I think you used the words case management and there were some people who reacted as you used that exact phraseology. And I'm not sure that we were talking about case management. We were talking about support services for people in the affordable units.
It's the same thing.
It's not quite. Case management implies somebody is God and they just are now on your case running it. And it's just a better definition. And even if it is the same thing, it's, it's just a better way of putting it.
I change use management to support.
I mean, I, I think, I mean, I think a case manager is not necessarily a god. A case manager is a support system, right? A case manager is someone for a family to go to to say, I need, like, I'm having problems with school. Like, who can I go to to help me with the school problems? Or I'm having problems, like, I don't, I, right, like, I don't have any food. Like, you know, where, where are resources that, where I can access, you know, low-cost food? So I think, you know, the case manager is, right, like, the, a, a, a constant resource for, for these families and individuals to access.
I guess that question is, does everybody need a case manager who's in affordable housing?
No, and they're not, they're not forcing them. They're making them available.
So that implies to me a slightly different terminology.
I think, I think there's a.
Dotting i's and crossing t's here, but.
But that's what we do.
But, but I, as.
That's what you do.
Exactly.
As a recent, as a recently departed Social Services Commissioner, I think there is, I think there is, there is a tension in the way that we talk about this in the city. And I think that there is, there is a case to be, a case, so to speak, to be made that some people want and/or need case management, but many, many other people don't. And they welcome the opportunity to have access to services that are not seen as problem-solving. They're seen as advancing opportunity or empowering them further to achieve their, their, their goals. So perhaps it's case management and/or support services. But I think it, to your, to your, I, I take the point of crossing t's and dotting i's, but I also recognize that there are some differences of opinion and philosophy across the way the city engages in this work and we might want to be a both-and on this rather than an either-or.
Well, no one's making them do it. I mean, it's a voluntary thing if you decide to go.
No, but people, there, there are, there are differences of opinion about what the experience of an individual who is in affordable housing is relative to the offers of services from the city and how those offers are presented.
So and?
Just case management and/or support services.
And/or, okay. So now can we vote?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
This is for the Developmentary Permit and the STOWA as amended by the motion. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinnon?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Chair Fresco?
Can we take a short break, please? It's been two hours.
Okay. Short, short.
Short.
You're always last back.
No, I'm not.
I expect you to be back first. Five minutes, so that's. Nine fourteen.
Congratulations or condolences, depending on how you feel the meeting's going so far?
No, I'm having a blast. And thank you for saying, you know, I didn't know how to say it.
Oh, yeah, it's only because it's come up.
Yeah.
Every time. Right, right. And Dave was well-prepared for it because...
Thank you.
Case management in 40 years, there is a big difference. Means everybody needs affordable housing, needs low income, needs special help. Excuse me, you can be poor, and you know more about resources than your social workers supposedly help you. You have to, you have to survive. No, I think we do, we do, we do. We're using... Put it in your... Post in their funding. Facial ice. Matas. Begin a war. Caricans.
Congratulations. And now these, like, they've been there for years.
Commissioners? Come, please sit at your chairs. We actually have two discussions on our agenda. We almost never have discussions on our agenda.
Oh, goodie.
It's very exciting. All right. All right. So our next item, 10A, is a discussion and possible direction to staff to study corporate housing requested by Commissioner Kennedy.
Jim, could I move a motion?
You may.
I'd like to move a motion that Commissioner Kennedy, emeritus Commissioner Kennedy, be given, say, five minutes to present this because it was her request, and she knows more about it than anyone else, and I think she needs adequate time to present it this evening. So I know that's not a usual request, but it would be a great thing if we could do that.
I'd second that.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
You've got at least five minutes. Oh, well...
She already has, that's true. She has somebody donating her time. She's tricky, tricky.
And then she's got the extra two, okay. Just go for it.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so...
I just was thinking of you.
Our Eileen Carey and Cathwell, Catherine Eldridge, Eileen Carey? Okay, beautiful. You're up.
Look, I brought these plans. I'd have to... All right, so let's put that down. Okay. Well, thank you very much for listening to my testimony this evening, my explanation of why I wanted this to be before the planning commission. I sent you, I sent the commission a letter today, which is now part of public record, I guess, and I hope you got a chance to take a look at it. I had some comments in there and some bullet points. And the bullet points are suggested changes. But I prepared something that I actually read at the city council meeting last night, and I just kind of spiced it up for the, for you guys. But I'm just going to go ahead and read that, but then at the end, focus on those bulleted points, because again, like I said, those are my suggested changes that I hope you will bring forward. In 2004, and again, we're talking about corporate housing, short-term rentals. In 2004, rentals for 30 days or more that offer amenities to occupants and are rented on a temporary basis were prohibited. The prohibition ordinance included the definition. The definition has been modified over time, and this type of rental is listed in our current zoning ordinance as a residential use, but it is still prohibited. And I believe we need to update the code in a few places to reinforce that prohibition. The, the attributes listed in the current definition are very outdated and overly specific. Owners and operators are apparently providing very similar but different amenities, furnishings, and services to circumvent the definition and the prohibition. Corporate short-term rentals are available to vacationers, and as you may, if you, either, if any of you watched the city council meeting last night where this topic was also on their agenda, you might have heard some of that testimony. The units have beds, couches, appliances, appliances, and services like a hotel. There are entire buildings that operate this way, but sometimes these units are rented right next door to tenants who have rented unfurnished typical apartments to live in as their permanent domicile, rent-controlled, or market rate. Long-term rent-controlled tenants are being bought out and Ellis, so developers can operate short-term rentals. And I'll just give you a brief overview. I've done a lot of research while I had my time on the planning commission, and recently a lot, I was able to compile a lot of that research, and I'll just give you a couple of little nuggets about what I found. For example, 1317 Seventh Street, there was a development agreement that came through the planning commission when I was on the commission. And now you can apparently go on oakwood.com, which are temporary apartments, temporary apartment rentals, and you can book a stay there, and you will actually get Marriott Rewards points for staying at this property, which was obviously designed for residential use. And I don't know if you guys recall, but on Second Street, the development that's right next to the NRDC called Chelsea, after that one was developed, we were probably all invited to go take a tour. I did take a tour, and they were showing these furnished units, and I asked them about it, and they explained to me that these were for corporate workers who were passing through town and wanted to stay in furnished units on a temporary basis. There have been, I'm really active in the rent control community, but you know, and there have been some tenants recently on 10th Street who were relocated because NMS and my suite decided to take their 20-unit rent-controlled properties and divide them up into 40 units. And I can explain a little bit more later how they did that. But the bottom line is, is that after they temporarily relocated those tenants for about two years, they started renting out those newly subdivided units separately for about $6,000 per 200 square feet for people just visiting on a temporary basis. And this caused a whole host of horrors for the tenants who actually didn't even get a chance to move back until after it was discovered, some people like myself and others discovered that they were already renting the new units to new tenants before telling the existing tenants who were relocated that could even come back. So the point is, is that right now in the, the current market, the current market for short-term rentals is so hot that it doesn't even matter if you're really a market rate tenant at the point, but, but definitely long-term rent-controlled tenants are being severely impacted by this. So in my research, I've counted about 39 buildings that are currently advertised this way in downtown Santa Monica alone. Here are some of my proposed amendments. I think that the planning commission could recommend to the council, first and foremost, amending the definition. Originally, it was called short-term housing, then it became corporate housing. I think it should be defined as short-term rentals, corporate housing, and corporate rentals, because these terms are used interchangeably. Another thing that could help is to add contemporary items to the list of attributes that constitute the definition. But, so for example, you know, adding electronics, charging ports, Wi-Fi lounges, business centers, couches, or another way to go about it, instead of just listing all of these new modern amenities, because the old, the current existing definition is so outdated, it talks about linens and VCRs and CD players, it's just, again, that's to illustrate how these new owner-operators are actually getting around the existing definition by doing these newer, modern things and listing these newer, modern things, and therefore bypassing the, what I believe is bypassing the prohibition. So you could actually add things to the list, or potentially just say, any combination of furnishings, amenities, and/or services are provided. You could also say one or more. Originally, when the definition was created, it said some services and amenities, then it got very specific and said two or more. Now I believe you should go back to making it more broad, and it should just probably Now I believe you should go back to making it more broad, and it should just probably say "any combination." Okay, here's an interesting thing. Even though there is a prohibition for corporate housing/short-term rentals, in the use table, oh, boy, five minutes goes really fast.
So what are the rest of the things on your list?
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that question. You'll, you'll never believe it. In the use table, there's actually no listing of corporate housing with little dash marks through the use table showing that it's prohibited. I don't know how we missed it, but it's not there. And I think that, again, even though the ordinance is in place and there is a prohibition, adding those, adding that signal to the residential use table and the commercial use table will say very loudly and clearly to people who might be even questioning it that it's prohibited. Another thing that I think would be really helpful, and they did this in West Hollywood in 2017 to address certain types of rent, corporate rentals that they were experiencing in their community, add, change this from a residential use to a commercial use. That will, I mean, we have to get, we have to be serious. These types of rentals are erasing the typical unfurnished, long-term lease apartments that are used by tenants who are using it as their domicile. And so if we just can separate it out and say, and be honest with ourselves and say that this is a commercial use, I think it'll go a long way. Another thing that West Hollywood did, actually, they did two things that I'm gonna propose. We should add conditions to all residential project permits so that the review authority shall ensure that no dwelling unit in the project may be used as corporate housing, corporate rental, or short-term rental. It could also state that this condition would be independent of the city's ban on vacation rentals, just to be extra clear. And you could add that same language in code sections about anything like CCNRs, management documents, and ADUs. Again, this is what West Hollywood has already done, so it's not unusual. And then I think the one thing that you really got, that you really should keep in, you have to keep in mind, is, and I'm coming back to this company called MySuite to just illustrate how this has proliferated. They, I've been in touch, because a lot of rent-controlled tenants are being affected, I've been in touch with the Rent Control Agency, and I've heard that this company, MySuite, which is operating the property on 10th Street, has actually pulled permits to do some more buildings in Santa Monica to take over some more rent-controlled properties. The staff could tell you more about that. You can inquire about it. But the bottom line is that they are advertising for employees on ZipRecruiter, for example, saying, you know, "We create turnkey living solutions for a vacation rental or a place that feels like home from day one." They're not hiding the fact that they're running corporate rentals. We just have to tidy up our definitions and a few other things to make sure that we stop the ones that are happening right now from continuing. And we also need to prevent it from happening in the future. And we, and we possibly return some of these units back into our typical residential housing stock. I mean, one thing that you may have read from the information the staff gave you is the "whereas" in the original definition. I'd like to just point out, the city must, it says here in the "whereas" is from the 2004 prohibition. "The city must preserve its unique sense of community, which derives in large part from residents' active participation in civic affairs, including local government, cultural events, and educational endeavors. Occupants of short-term rental housing do not and cannot have the same involvement and ties to the community and to their neighborhoods in which they reside as occupants who treat their city and their neighborhoods as their home." And the "whereas" for that original ordinance are actually spectacular. It even talks about how we shouldn't be giving incentives, concessions, and benefits to developers to create housing, residential housing units that we consider, when we talk about apartments and units, we think unfurnished, long-term lease, units for people who intend to reside there as their permanent domicile. And in reality, they're getting SECO exemptions, potentially getting, potentially getting SECO exemptions, and, like I said, benefits to create units that are actually only being marketed to people who are here for a short period of time, whether they're vacationers, whether they are people who are coming here to work for Sony for a short period of time and then they're, and then they're leaving. So I ask that the Planning Commission ask staff to take a look at our definitions, maybe bring you back something that you could recommend to council on a rapid basis so that it doesn't go on for too much longer, because it's taking over Santa Monica, and we need to do something about it. Thanks so much. Thanks for giving me the extra time. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. I see a bunch of questions. Mario?
Yeah, how are they able to take units out of rent control? And you said they got permits. How do they actually do that?
So let me be clear. Basically, they are not removing them from rent control. Because there is vacancy de-control, that means that the owner-operator can set the rent at the market rate. So for, in the, in the instance of 10th Street, they offered buyouts to many tenants. Some of them took them, and some of them didn't. And then when they had some vacant units, they were able to start construction on the property, and then when it was finished and all of the permits were done and the habitability check was done, and they, people could move back in, they were able to charge market rates, or they shouldn't have been charging market rates, but they did charge market rates to newly vacated units. And these people were now not even renting those full units. They were renting these little half-units. Well, now here's another interesting thing. This is also happening on, I've heard from tenants, I'm personally hearing from tenants who live on, who live in a property on San Vicente. Similar thing happened. There's a 16-unit property. The landlord came in, he told everybody, "Hey, we're going to Ellis." Eight people panicked, and they left. Eight people stayed. So eight units became open. As soon as they left, the landlord came in, remodeled all of the units, cleaned everything up, put beds and couches and coffee makers and all kinds of things in there, and started to re-rent them. They were vacant now, and so now they're at market rate. I happen to know that some of those tenants were there for three years. Some of them were there for much longer, but it didn't matter. Now they're at market rate. Of course, they're re-controlled, okay, but it doesn't matter. The new habit, I've heard from the people who stayed, and the people who are renting these newly refurbished units are there for 45 days, five days, two months, a family on vacation from a foreign country. Some people are just from, you know, Northern California here, visiting because they're looking to do something.
They're basically hotels.
They're basically hotels. But the interesting thing is, we all know what a vacation rental is, and we know what home sharing is and whatnot, but I think what got lost in the shuffle a little bit is this term, "short-term rentals." We need to kind of relook at it, recapture it, and, and take control of it, because these are rentals that are, at least in the current definition, 30 days or longer. And a lot of these websites, a lot of these companies that are advertising, like, for example, on Second Street, the Chelsea, if you just go to their website, you'll see they have this little ad. It says, "Stay here and you'll feel just like home," you know? Well, and they list all of these amenities. I think, well, you know exactly what I think. So I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First, I want to thank you for all the research you've done and for bringing this. Before I talked to you today, I had no idea the breadth of this issue, and thanks to you, I now do. So thank you for that. One of the concerns I have, and maybe it's something we need to actually ask the Rent Control Board, but you may know the answer, that if we shift this from residential to commercial, is there an Ellis impact? I mean, if somebody goes out of the rental housing business and suddenly makes this a whatever, short-term rental or vacation rental, and becomes commercial, is that okay under Ellis? Because it's not really housing.
Well, I think, well, I think by doing that, again, and strengthening the prohibition, the goal would be to say, if you, that you wouldn't be able to operate this commercial use.
You couldn't do it anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
So.
The other, the other question, this is pretty obvious, actually, the, the San Vicente case, that would fall under the vacation rental ordinance of the city, right?
Well, on the property that I'm speaking about, they are, at least from what I'm hearing and what the tenants are testifying about at the city council meeting last night, that there are, that they are communicating with the tenants that are coming and going, and some are staying for more than 30 days and some for less, so it actually crosses both.
And also, just finally, it seems to me that it makes more sense, I want to hear what you think, of not calling anything corporate housing, because their mom and pops doing it all over the city, their corporation, just calling it short-term rental would be, would cover everybody, wouldn't it?
It's possible. I think that's something that you should definitely discuss, and I'll help be a part of the conversation in any way that I can. This is actually a very, very complex issue, because, for example, there's, NMS, as you know, we all know about them, and they have a lot of websites, and I don't know how often you take the time to look at their websites, but one thing that's really interesting is they have something called a corporate application. And what that, and so if you click on it, what that is, is it allows a corporation to rent the units, and then the corporation just goes and does what they want, you know? It's like a subleasing type of a situation. The Rent Control Board has actually taken steps in the past week or so to stop that. You'll have to rent to a person. They did, they took some pretty swift action, and it's really great, but we're talking about rent-controlled units there. So I think that this, this body needs to recommend to the city council that they take care of it for everyone else.
Well, that brings up another question. What if I, Les and Lambert, were an executive with a tech company?
I know the answer.
No, I'm totally technically idiot, but, and then I leased an apartment unit with the idea of allowing tech people to use it, but it's in my name, and then I sublease to tech people visiting. How would you ever stop that?
Well, so the lease is the law. There are certain things about that which there are permissions for. That's something that I would want to consult with the Rent Control Board on and get a little bit more information on that.
I'm not sure how you would enforce that.
Well, you know what's really, well, I don't want to talk about specific instances that I've been hearing about, but that's, the goal isn't, in my opinion, the goal isn't to find a way to get them to do it. The way, the goal is to get them to stop doing this so that people can have neighbors again, you know? The market, just think about this for a second, right? On 10th Street, someone is actually in a unit at the moment paying for less than 200 square feet, $6,000 a month, okay? Apparently, according to what I've heard, they came in, or no, I'm sorry, they, they were out of state, they rented it for about $2,500, something in that range, got here, learned that everything else they needed to live was extra, and actually was stuck, and then, and got, the bill got up to $6,000, and they moved in and said, "Well, I'm here. I have to do it." Unfurnished rentals for people who are looking to move in as their permanent domicile, either in an older building or maybe even in a newer building, are not, in my opinion, commanding the same rents. So these short-term rentals, furnished, luxury, short-term rentals are skewing the rental market, and they're taking permanent housing units off of the market. So we could get, we can have better vacancy rates, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, we can have more vacancies for people who want to move in if we can get rid of some of these units that are skirting the law. It's my hope that this effort will, and it already has gotten the city council talking, obviously, the rent board started things on their end. There needs to be enforcement. There's going to have to be some kind of investigation and research, and obviously, the city spends a lot of time going after vacation rentals, and rightfully so, but now we need to look at these as well.
Thank you.
Oh, and I just wanted to answer your other question. I think for a moment there, you were starting to talk about, "Well, what if I am an executive and I'm coming in?" So in 2004, when this happened, and I have only a very vague memory of it, and I just keep hearing anecdotal stories about how it went down, so please correct me if I'm wrong, which I might be. Apparently, there were some new buildings that were built, and then people started operating them in this fashion, and there was a big discussion, there was a moratorium, and then there was, you know, search, and that's how the prohibition came about, and that some units, I believe, were allowed to continue to operate that way. So there are, like, there's like 10 or 12 or 15 apartment buildings in downtown Santa Monica that have like Italianate names. I can't even think of what they are. It's like Synergy Housing or something like that, but they're all corporate rentals. 15 buildings with dozens and dozens and dozens of units, and that doesn't even include like AO, maybe the Arboretum, Citrus Suites. There are so many. So if you're an executive and you need one of those, like, they're here. And again, I would ask you to ask staff to find out about the legal, legal status of these units, but I believe there are some that have been allowed to, either through some kind of contractual agreement or something, allowed to continue. So it's not like prohibiting the ones that have been running rampant and taking away residential units in this, in the recent history is going to damage the ability of people to still find this type of housing. We just need to really curb these abuses that are taking place right now.
So my understanding is, so the Rent Control Board, with respect to rent-controlled housing, has recently passed a regulation stating that only natural persons can be, can, essentially sign the lease and occupy a rent-controlled unit, which makes absolute sense. My question is, for our discussions, it strikes, I'm here, I want to make sure I understand this, because I mean, I feel like I'm hearing a sort of distinct considerations, and I, and I don't know if I'm thinking about this in an effective way. So the first one is, who's doing this? Is, it sounds like there is, this is a line of business. There are, there are companies that have gone into business to acquire through rental or lease individual units within single buildings that they then want to sublease, and the purpose of their business is that sublease. That's where they're making their profit.
So to answer that really briefly, yes, there are corporations and operators that are doing that, that way, but there are also, as is the case on San Vicente and a couple of other places, just mom-and-pop landlords who are finding how to, how to do it on their own with very small boutique organizations.
But I guess to, to Commissioner Lambert's question, from a kind of a planning standpoint, if we had, let's say we had a major employer in the city, say, "Look, we can't, we have a housing crisis. We need to house our employees. We want to figure out a way. We're not in the, we're not in the MySuite business. We're not in the rental business. We're in the business of doing what we do, but we want to try to solve the housing crisis for our employees." Is that, is that qualitatively the same problem, and how might we distinguish between the one and the other?
I mean, it depends. I mean, are we talking, I mean, well, for example, in West Hollywood, this is, actually, this is very similar to what West Hollywood was dealing with. Their ordinances are slightly different from things that I'm proposing, but it sounds like what they were going through, slightly different than what we're going through, being this tourist city right here in the, on the edge of town. But I think, how long are they going to be working? You know, are we talking about, for, I mean, you know, Disneyland employees live in Anaheim all year round.
Right.
There are people who come and they pass by, pass through for a couple of, maybe six months or something, obviously students. I mean, there are things that I think the Planning Commission needs to consider when looking at how you're going to address this, but my, for me, anyway, going back to the West Hollywood example, the reason why I just answered you that way is because they said, "If, your lease is only."
Okay.
In their, in their ordinance.
So there's a time regulation, right? It's not the, it's not the type of business, but it's the length of the lease.
Yeah.
What about a corporation that wanted to simply have a unit available to itself that it wasn't subleasing? Imagine, you know, they just want to dump a bunch of programmers in this, like, they're just gonna, they're gonna deal with the IRS on taxing that as a perk, you know, separately, but just actually acquiring a unit for its own business purposes.
Well, apparently now with the new rent controller, they won't be doing it in rent-controlled units.
No, they won't be doing it in rent-controlled units. I'm asking about, yeah, exactly.
But I, well, again, I think what it comes down to is, let's say it's Riot Games. We all know that they're over on, whatever it is, close enough to Santa Monica, so, but all, everybody that's gaming there wants to live in Santa Monica, right? Maybe they're, maybe they're really living here. Maybe they're living here for a year, two years, three years, you know? We all go on social media. I see those people are actually really living here, and they're part of the community. They're not just, but maybe they do need, you know, units for gamers who are like doing some world tour. I have no idea. This is definitely something I think the commission should talk about, but for the most part, I think we need to focus on curbing the, maybe one of the ways to put it is to really curb the abuses of where people are cycling in and out on a month, 45-day basis. That's a top priority for me, I think.
We wouldn't, presumably, though, we wouldn't want to, if there were people who were coming in to stay with family members who are in the hospital, like a Ronald McDonald House-type thing.
You know, this goes back to what I was just saying. There are already buildings and units in Santa Monica where these are available, and now it's just becoming such a popular business model, really all over the world, that you could, and you might want to do this tonight, you actually, your question reminded me of the one thing that I forgot to do before I came here this evening. I was like, "I got my computer," and I meant to actually hit it and pull it down. There are so many how-tos on the internet to tell landlords exactly how to profit with short-term corporate rentals, and they use the term interchangeably because lots of communities do. And it's just very simple, and it even describes how you can get, you want premier, you want to make all your amenities really nice, and you want to get premier occupants. And that's really sad, because that's going to erode all of our economic diversity in Santa Monica, you know, it's going to... You know, it's going to, well, seriously change the character of Santa Monica. I mean, it is, it's already doing that.
But that's qualitatively different from a nine-month student, nine-month student housing or somebody who's like living for eight months while their kid's getting chemo or something. I mean, and then the last, and the last piece, forgive me, so we have the, we have the business type, we have the duration of the lease, we have the purpose of the lease.
Vacation, for example, right.
Right, and then the last, I think, would be, and this is a question, are you raising a question about design? Because I've seen, you described this, I mean, I, I hate to hear what you've described, which is like chopping up a rent-controlled unit and parcelling it out, which is, that's offensive to hear. At the same time, if you're starting from scratch, there are companies that believe that this is the future of millennial housing. People want to have their own room and a bathroom and shared kitchen and design something purpose-built, but for long-term residential use, right? Someone who's going to come in and live here for a year, two, three, four. Are you suggesting that there are design elements that we need to look at in this context?
Yes, in fact, I guess one of the things you could do is, well, I gave this a little thought, but I think it might be a little tangential to what you're saying. But I go back to the 10th Street example, when they divided them up, half of the unit had no kitchen and the other half did. And I had the opportunity to be on-site to actually view them for myself and was told about exactly what you just said. Millennials just want to drink smoothies and they don't need a kitchen. I mean, you couldn't, wouldn't believe the things I heard. So, look, a 97-square-foot unit where the bedroom is like smaller and there's this little hallway and there's like a minibar maybe and it's, that's just, we're, this is,
That's a hotel room.
That's too much, it's a hotel room. So yeah, so I think size issues of the whole unit, size issues of the bedroom are an issue. And, well, again, let me get back to the point that I thought was kind of tangential. I think the commission should also discuss with staff, and please ask staff, inquire with them, about how you can prevent any owner-operator, from, any owner or operator, from coming in and saying, I want to subdivide these units. Now, I've actually talked at length with Jing about this and it's not possible to increase the density, double the density by splitting the units. And so they did this in a very, very crafty way. And to skirt the law. And I'm sure that Jing and David and others know exactly what they did to be able to pull their permits because they obviously passed muster. But they, again, they did it in such a sneaky way because not everybody knew exactly the intent at the end of the, of the, you know, events. So ensuring that somebody just can't come along and say, like, for example, maybe if we all get this all hammered out and in the future you would say to Dave Rand, you would say, okay, so we have, we're gonna, project description, condition, whatever it is you're gonna do, you're not going to be able to subdivide these units, even if you just keep one door or you have double doors or whatever it is down the line. And you could tell him too, you're not going to operate them as corporate short-term rentals. But yeah, you might need to look at, whether it's our zoning code, was it building and safety? We need to ask staff, this is actually all really recent information that I learned as a tenant advocate that I'm still trying to find out the answers for, so. But with the commission's collaboration with staff, you might be able to, and again, city council is very interested in this. You might be able to find out how to prevent that right away so that people don't purchase more buildings and start dividing them up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, may I just provide a point of clarification? Because I don't want there to be a misunderstanding, not to talk about specific properties or, you know, things that are under investigation. But to be very clear, there's a minimum dwelling unit size in the zoning code of 375 square feet. There's a definition of what a dwelling unit is and you have to have independent provisions for sleeping, for bathing and for cooking. So you have to have, you know, a place to sleep, a bathroom and a kitchen in order to be considered a dwelling unit. We do have housing types like SROs in the code that allow a smaller, what I'll call, it's not really a unit, but it can be a minimum of 150 and no larger than 375. And in those situations, they do not have to have a kitchen or a bathroom, those can be all shared facilities. That's a very unique housing type. We also have a group residential classification, which are like dormitories, you know, different kind of like private organization, you know, whether it's like a convent or what have you, those sorts of things where you can have shared living quarters. And again, those are not considered dwelling units. Some of the situations that we're seeing, complaints we're seeing now, in terms of what's happening with existing rental housing, is they did appropriately get building permits and the plans show that they were dwelling units. It appears that some partitions or what have you were added after the fact that turns some of these spaces into spaces that are no longer dwelling units because they don't have kitchen, bathroom and sleeping all in one space. And that is the subject of, you know, that's the question that we're looking at right now. But if it is in fact that, that is a completely different use classification, it would be considered a group residential use. Has to get a minor use permit, it is not permitted outright used in the code, you have to park it appropriately. And, you know, if you wanted to add dwelling units to something that's already over density, you can't do that in residential zones. So I just want to be very clear that this is not something that has been authorized or suddenly got allowed by the code, it's not. You know, it's, seems to be a relatively new phenomenon and we're looking at it in terms of, and we've been asked by council, as you can see from their direction last night, you know, to look at issues like this, but those are the rules as they stand, it is actually not permitted to do what's occurred.
And I just also want to say that a lot of the information that I gave you tonight was based on my own research, conversations that I've had with people. And again, I hope that there will be more, you know, enforcement and investigations perhaps forthcoming as a result of this information and the ongoing work that happens. But all the information is mine.
Jason.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what Jing said with a question. Are you, the way that you see it then, this is just a matter of, I won't say just, this is a matter of code enforcement. And that while we might consider changes, city council might consider changes to the definition or other text amendments, that fundamentally, that's not necessary in order to rectify the problem that's being described.
I don't think I want to say that no changes are required because we're being asked to look at this holistically. And, you know, we're trying to listen to the discussion from last night and tonight as well to actually try and wrap our minds around, like, to identify the issue. Because of course, we have a home sharing and vacation rental ordinance and that sort of stuff is actually under the umbrella of short-term rental. And Denise Smith, actually, from the enforcement division is here tonight to speak to some of those, if you do have questions about that. But, but, you know, there was a very deliberate move to change the name in the zoning ordinance to corporate housing to distinguish it from vacation rentals. Because vacation rentals are defined as, you know, you're staying, it's like 30 days or less. Corporate housing as defined in the code is greater than 30 days. And so it's a little bit hard really to, you know, think about how do you deal with these things? You know, what's the difference between a month-to-month rental and what I'm hearing is to concern, which is someone staying two months or four months or people who are coming for a medical purpose versus not. You know, how do you define and enforce that? I think those are some of the challenges, you know, that we'll be taking a look at. You know, so, and, you know, certainly that issue as to whether we change the definitions, I think we're being asked to look at that. So I don't know that I can definitively state that we wouldn't require anything. But we obviously need to understand, like, what is the problem that we're trying to, to address, you know? And is it, like, is there a way to actually regulate the kind of activity without prohibiting, I think, other normal sorts of activity? You know, where we would want, for example, students to be able to come and rent a place for nine months? But how is that distinguished from an executive who wants to come and stay for nine months? You know, are we going to make that kind of distinction and how do you do that? And make it enforceable?
And you anticipate considering those questions within, as part of council's direction?
Yeah, so I put that on the screen because last night council did give directions to staff. You know, it was kind of fortuitous that that occurred and then this discussion was scheduled for tonight, review tonight as sort of the kickoff of the beginning of a discussion and the exploration of this issue.
Thank you. I'm in the queue, but I think others are ahead of me.
Amy, are you waiting?
Thank you. So Commissioner Kennedy, the, in your correspondence to us, you specifically called out looking at projects at Lincoln at Colorado.
Oh, right.
Was that, what's the idea behind that specific location?
Okay, well, the idea behind that is that I actually went to the council meeting last night and testified there as well. And that is a remnant of my testimony to the city council, so I apologize, but.
We're getting remnants now?
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. No, I actually, that's funny because I did go back and relook at everything and personalize it for you. But I was specifically concerned, my comment is because I'm specifically concerned that one company that's already doing this around town will be doing it on one of those sites, will be building one of those sites. And we have all got, I mean, I was the chairperson when those projects were a glimmer in people's eyes. And it was first the, you know, some of the projects on one of the corners was like, it was going to be a big campus. And then it was, no, it was going to be divided into little projects and all this stuff. And we had all of these hopes and dreams for people moving into our city and, and living here and becoming a part of the community and, and, you know, livening our streets and bringing new, you know, with the new population, bringing wonderful new stores into the mix and making really wonderful neighborhood. And I just would hate to see that, I'm kind of hoping that there's a way between now and the development of those projects that this doesn't happen in any of those. I mean, imagine, think of all the time that we spent and everyone in the community shaping them, arguing about them and everything, and then having them turn out to just be really kind of de facto hotel rooms. That's, that's wrong, not to mention the fact that they may, likely would have received benefits, concessions and incentives to, to do that and to basically hide it from us. So when I made that comment last night to city council, that's what I was referring to. And I've spoken with them about that, so.
Thank you for clarifying that important point.
Thanks.
I want to reiterate what Commissioner Lambert said, which is, it's fantastic that you have brought this to our attention. And as I was saying, thank you for all your commitment to this investigation. To me, these seem like, many of these seem like great recommendations. I actually have two questions for staff, which is, I guess I'm not quite understanding why the code enforcement part is so hard. So. She didn't pay me for that.
I was hoping you'd call me up here.
This is your first time at the planning commission?
Yes, sir, it is.
Well, it's wonderful. Because you were running the planning commission for a long time, from behind the scenes.
I was, I was running the whole city. Yeah, so actually, Commissioner Kennedy was spot-on when she talked about the amenities that are very clearly listed in the zoning ordinance. They are outdated, they're very specific and, and the only one that we typically see is furnished apartments. The other ones are like meeting room, business center, things like that. It's very rare that we'll see those. And the code actually requires that they have two or more of those. So that's the biggest one. We also have to improve, to prove that the intent of the occupant is to, to stay there temporarily, which is very difficult to do. And also, well, if I could go back to when the vacation rental ordinance was passed three years ago, the purpose of that was because prior to that, it was very difficult to enforce short-term rentals. So when we clarified that, when council approved that, that allowed us to issue, now we can issue citations for advertising, facilitating or operating a vacation rental. The city attorney's office has successfully prosecuted a number of hosts. But we don't have that same luxury with corporate housing right now. It's still, it's still very vague.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a clarification question for Jennifer, I forgot to ask her.
Can I, can I just clarify that I have more questions?
I'm sorry.
Okay, it's okay. So if we change the definition, if we change the definition now, then code enforcement would be able to go enforce the new definition? There wouldn't be any kind of?
Yeah, I think definitely part of the work is working with our enforcement staff and the city attorney's office to try and craft a definition that is, you know, enforceable.
Yeah.
It may not address all of the things and questions that have been asked tonight, you know, but at least make our current definition more enforceable so that it's, you know, not, not vague. You know, I think that, that's definitely the idea, yeah.
I guess the one other thought that I would share is for us to consider whether in intentional situations we might want some of this type of housing. Commissioner Landris, I think, provides a good example, right, that families might be here temporarily for health needs. And I will admit, I hate it when we make the, the personal policy, but, you know, I have a sibling who works out of town for, you know, six, seven, four months, right? And she lives in corporate housing when she is away on her jobs. So, you know, I think that there is, and I would say, right, that she kind of becomes part of the community, right? Like, she goes and she gets coffee and she goes to the yoga studio, right? So I think there is, there is some benefit to the community to having these types of businesses. I think it supports our, in particular, it supports our creative businesses, right? The movie business, the television business, the computer tech stuff. So, you know, one way to maybe get at that is one of, I was going to call you Commissioner Kennedy, one of Commissioner Kennedy's recommendations around, like, you know, changing it from residential use to a commercial use. But I guess I would just, you know, as long as we're having the conversation about this, should we consider potential locations or situations where this use might be okay and beneficial to the community?
Are you done?
I'm done.
Thank you. You mentioned all the benefits and the incentives and what have you that housing is getting. Are you primarily talking about the sequestration?
Yes, but I mean, let's look at this for another one. You know, oh, I want to see a few more units of truly affordable housing in here. Why are you getting, you know, your 30% units, two-for-one? I mean, and, oh, well, we, you know, we can't afford to put more affordable units in our projects. And we're all thinking, and these units are really expensive, you know, $3,000, $4,000 a month. And they're saying they can't, you know, afford to put any more affordable units in there. And the reality is, is that they are turning over a lot and they are getting a lot more because they're furnished. Again, like I said, furnished rentals with services and high-end amenities are in a different rent strata than what an unfurnished unit for, as your permanent domicile would be in. And not having to put more of those units in, that's a benefit. I mean, there are so many, I mean, just watching the project that you guys just went through, right off the top of my head, it's late, I was even sitting there looking and counting all of the different benefits that the developer is getting as a result of saying, when, you know, when you say, Mr. Ty, can you do X, Y and Z? And he says, well, not really, you know, there's benefits that pile up in multiple forms and so, yeah. So without a doubt, they're receiving benefits.
So, but if we took away this ability to do short-term rentals, the windfall in profits would be gone, so.
Well, you know, but at the same time, what we're talking about here is maybe having the truth finally be prevailing and building actual units for residences for families. I mean, if you think about how many families with children who have, you know, you know, low or low income or even median income families, how many of these families do you think are actually moving into these furnished luxury rentals that are being advertised? The answer is none. They're not even being, I mean, it's not even something that you would even think about doing. And, and the intent is there, the intent is obvious because you can go on these websites and just essentially rent them and you fill out the form online and you do it. I mean, it's all done very out in the open and I think we need to also be upfront about, about how we're going to fix it. And to just touch really quickly on the, if, if, when rent-controlled tenants have to move out because there's construction or something like that, there are means and methods plans and have to be filed and everybody has to check, you know, within the city, it checks them along the way to make sure that what the tenants have to go through is, is being monitored, okay? have to go through is, um, is being monitored, okay? If, you know, what Jing was saying, was saying, you know, there, you know, this is going through the process and then when the permitting is done or, you know, that there's a wall that gets, a structure that gets put up and, and you don't know, um, well, I would say, hat, let's start to have that discussion. Let's kind of create like the means and methods plan. Or, you know, I'm just saying, I'm trying to equate it to say, there needs, if, if the permit, if the checking of what's going on stops at a certain point, then we need to make more checks along the way. And that's actually something that we can control. And maybe, um, I'm hoping that you guys will listen to the comments that I've made this evening and, and ask staff to bring you back some information, which I know they will because they're obviously so, um, deep into it already, having heard from the council and now this. Um, you can ask them to bring you back some language and maybe you can include that in it as well and say, not only do we wanna look at this code, but we wanna talk about how, um, those checks are actually happening so that this can't happen again. I mean, we look at something, our goal, I mean, our mission, right, we're talking about the mission statement, the planning commission's mission is to, you know, rec, see and possibly recommend changes to make things better. Um, we see a problem, I've, I've seen a problem and I'm hoping that you guys will carry it forward.
Thank you.
And please don't hesitate to ask me any questions if you wanna call me ever or anything like that.
Richard.
So, I don't have a question. I have some thoughts about where we're going. You say there are no public comments?
No more comments.
Okay. So, the, it's such an interesting and difficult question because clearly from what Commissioner Jenna's been saying is, whole buildings are being hollowed out by people moving out of, um, renting an apartment into renting, um, kind of in-place, short-term, highly expensive places to crash for a month or two months or three months and people are using them on a constantly turning over basis. And there's that building down on the, um, on Ocean Avenue, the high-rise one, that's always been 10, $14,000, $16,000 a month for people, movie stars to come out and hang out for a while. And yet, there is, as Commissioner Anderson was saying, a need, um, for the friction of society when people move out here for maybe a couple of months or maybe four months or, uh, maybe here for the college year to have a place to be. And we don't want to lose all the, the, um, accommodation and the, the rent-controlled apartments and we don't want to be on the low end of asking things from developers and find that they have moved out of that market into a highly renumerative market, which makes everything we've done a joke. So, for example, this evening, we asked for four units from the, well, we would've asked for more, but we got four units out of 50 units. And if, if it's in a whole other different economic category, we would've asked for, say, 15 and tried to claw back some of the economic advantage. And so the, I, I think it's gonna require a lot of thought and crafting it in such a way that you can actually nail the people who are just moving people through like it's a, uh, an airport terminal. That's not gonna be easy, but that's really what we wanna stop. It's, it's that kind of hollowing out of our accommodation stock and using it in a very cynical way to allow people just to transit Santa Monica as no, another form of hotel accommodation that's a little more comfortable for them for the time being. That's really what we're zeroing in on. And how you write that, I, I think is a tough one. So, maybe it takes a bit of backwards and forwards for us to do it. I also think compliance needs to crack down on these guys who are sort of wantonly changing stuff, um, at the moment that exists. And it seems to me that that's what you were alluding to a minute or two ago. Um, but the scale of the problem is obviously not just one building somewhere. It's across the whole city and that goes to the economic value of our city, that it's gone sky-high and then people, people see it as a desirable place to hang out. So, um, I guess the question is what we do right now. What, what is it you need Jing to move forward on this so that we can have a discussion about this in a timely way? Maybe in a couple of months. Do you need a direction tonight or a request or a motion?
How about some more discussion about what we'll go into the motion?
Yes, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's the end that you would want to hear from us so that we can be working on that as we go.
So, we, we already have direction from council to, you can see they reviewed the definition of what constitutes corporate housing. Um, that may be a very large chunk of this to, you know, look carefully at that, at that definition of corporate housing that's existing in the code and, you know, to make it possible, to, to make it enforceable. That, obviously, that's the big deal. If you write something that's not enforceable, then it would have been for nothing.
Which we have.
Um, yeah, and then there, there's a second part here about code requirements for room sizes and other parameters. That sort of has less to do with, um, th, this corporate housing question. So, we do have that general direction from the council already. I think what, and, and I think, I, I've heard a couple of helpful things tonight. One is obviously with the definition. Um, I think Commissioner Anderson had a suggestion. I, I think what we wanna hear from you is like, things that you want us to explore or look at, whether it's options or different ideas or, or concepts. Um, you know, even if you don't get there in terms of, um, identifying, uh, what the issue is. Cause I'm, I'm hearing a few things that, um, I think you touched on, Commissioner McKinnon, in terms of this, like high turnover, uh, high-end furnishing and amenities, is the idea to look at somehow, you know, requiring that units are not allowed to be furnished, are not allowed to have certain amenities. Um, you know, are we looking at, uh, requiring that leases have a minimum amount? I mean, I'm not even sure, you know, the legality of, of all this, but it would be helpful to kind of understand, you know, some of the things. I mean, these are some of the things that we have in our mind, you know, and we're thinking, you know, as you're recognizing, this is, it's not particularly easy. Um, vacation rentals are a class of 30 days and below and that, there's already a very robust ordinance that deals with that. I think you're talking about the ones that are the 45 days, 60 days, 31 days. Um, you know, that's a little more challenging or even like four months. I mean, it's, uh, you know, how, how do we deal with those? And I think that that's where it would be helpful to get collective thoughts. I don't think you need to come to a consensus motion tonight cause this is just a discussion.
Just thoughts.
Yeah, exactly.
Can I say something? Are you done, Richard?
Oh, I'll say something again, but.
Um, I, I think, um, after talking to Jennifer and reading through, um, a lot of this, my inclination would be to take out the, uh, amenities list, cause whatever we do with that is gonna be adequate in two or three years anyway. I mean, it's like, the current one has what VCRs on it? Um, I'm, I'm joking. I mean, no.
It's a VCR.
What's a VCR?
It does, actually.
So, so, so my inclination would be just to, um, to take that out and the language she uses, actually, which is furnished, what is it, furnishings, amenities and services or some combination thereof would define, um, the short-term rental. Um, I also would like to keep it as, as a housing designation and the reason for that is it would be a minimum square footage. So, you, you would have a livable unit, whatever it's called, um, to avoid a 10th Street situation again. Uh, and then Sean kinda touched on this too. There, there's gotta be some carve-out for student housing, for people who are here with their children in the hospital or relatives in the hospital. And actually, as you know, as part of the development agreement with St. John's, they're actually building a housing facility for exactly that purpose. And I wouldn't wanna discourage that. And if UCLA Santa Monica wants to do the same thing, then more power to them. Um, and then student housing's a whole other issue of short-term housing and that's important. And I think particularly ADUs, particularly in Sunset Park, is housing for students in SMC, should be exempted from the short-term, um, rental. Um, so how, how exactly gonna carve out those sort of meritorious uses of short-term rental? I'm not sure, but I think it's important to do that. Um, what else? That's, uh, uh, but I think the most important thing from the standpoint of code enforcement now is to take out the list of amenities, cause I think that's, that's ridiculous. Cause obviously there's a way around it, cause it's been found, so we can enforce the prohibition. So that's my thought.
I think, uh, it's just kind of obvious but important to say that, you know, staff should really look at Jennifer's list. I mean, those were all really carefully thought out and thought through ideas, so we just wanna make sure that's acknowledged moving forward. Jason?
Yeah, I would, well, first of all, I wanna ask, uh, city staff if you think that it's good to articulate the details, even though, you know, the specific, uh, amenities that are, um, that qualify a unit has corporate housing, uh, from an, from an enforcement standpoint. Cause I, I agree with Commissioner Lambert, on the surface at least, it, it, it doesn't seem to make sense, but perhaps.
Right. Anytime you list them out, then the host knows what not to offer. So, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Lambert.
Great. Uh, and then just, you know, I, I believe that, uh, Commissioner Kennedy pointed out that there were a number of, of projects that have, that are under contract or some, some kind of agreement with the city where they are, they legally provide the, this, this type of housing or this type of service. Uh, and so, to me then, the question is, uh, does, do we have the, um, the diversity of options that would kind of fit, uh, a wide range of, of need for, for people coming in? Uh, do we have the number that seems to make sense? Uh, the number of, of units that, that are serving this purpose that seem to make sense for, uh, a city of our size and character? Um, so I, I would hope that that would be a, and also the, the geographic distribution throughout the city. Uh, so I would hope that that would be a part of, of the analysis going forward.
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I think, uh, first of all, thank you for all the research you've done. Uh, but I, I see this in a slightly different way. Oh, any system that we set up, someone's gonna figure out how to game it, how to go around it. Uh, and in just a few examples that you mentioned, Commissioner Kennedy, um, there's a lesson there of how that person got around the system, found a little rabbit hole, found a little tiny hole and drove a truck through it. And so those holes, thank you for pointing that out, those holes are listed in the violations that we are seeing, whether they are enforced yet or not. The holes are what we have to plug for protecting the existing housing stock, okay? Then there has to be, what I'm thinking is code forwards, which are for the newer buildings, which are subject to possible adulteration. How can you write it in your findings or in your conditions of approval that they can't be twisted to become, for lack of a better word, glorified hotels? Cause in a funny sort of way, when we've entered into the world of very large projects, 50, 100 units, and we've cranked those up with amenities, with gyms and barbecues and rooftop wonders and spas, hey, that looks like corporate housing to me. Even if you had unfurnished rooms, it feels really comfortable. If I was a corporate executive, I wanna stay in one of these wonderful Santa Monica apartments.
No room for bikes, cause of all the amenities.
Yeah, exactly. But the point I'm making is that then we have to build into the conditions of approval that this is not corporate housing. And, and therefore they get all the benefits that you've referred to and they get them legitimately as opposed to under a false flag, which is what's happening now. So, one is protecting the old, find the loopholes, how do you plug them? One is prevent the new adulteration and that, I think, is a little bit easier, but still it has to be done.
Yes.
Sean?
I, I, um, so I, I would like to see if we can, um, explore some definitions of different types of housing that we would want, right? So, to the, to, to what we've been, what Commissioner Lambert and I have been talking about. Is there, is there some category called medical support housing? Is there some category of student housing that is legally distinguishable from other types of, um, medium, for lack of a better term, medium-term housing? I don't know if we can make that distinction, but it would be, it would be helpful, to me at least, to see, to see that gamed out, to look at, um, that type, whether, what definitions we can and cannot provide, um, how we can carve out what is not corporate housing, um, the question of, of regulation of purpose of, of, the purpose of the business, the length of the stay, um, or the length of residence, and the, and then lastly, the question of design. Um, because I, I do think we could see down the line, um, this, this new sort of co-hou, these new co-housing models and we ought to interrogate those very, very strongly, but we ought not to write ourselves into a situation where we're sort of closing our, we're shutting down a new form of long-term housing for different generational needs. The last thing that I would say, and I think this goes to, I, I, I thought of it as Commissioner Fonda Bernardi was speaking, is, um, earlier, someone I, I don't, I think it was Commissioner Lambert, um, decried the absence of three-bedroom affordable housing. And one of the concerns that I have carrying forward from the Social Services Commission is the absolute absence, um, of sufficient family housing. Uh, and the pro, and the challenge, of course, is that a three-bedroom unit is like a perfect target for one of these subdividers. And so how could, are there opportunities for us in the code to, um, to protect those units, to permit those units and then protect them so they go to the families that need them rather than ending up being divided? And, and I will be a little bit controversial and say, I, I, I really want them to go to families. I'm, I'm a little less concerned about roommates right now, um, because we have such an emergency need. And then that's the last piece, which is whether there is state law or city code that would permit us to do certain things under emergency conditions due to the fact that our rental vacancy rate is so low. I would be, um, I, I am, I'm sympathetic to what Commissioner Anderson implied and I think we ought to explore whether there is some limited number of corporate housing solutions that is in fact beneficial to the city. But while our rental, rental vacancy rate is so low, I wanna keep that cap as low as possible. If our rental vacancy rate went to eight, 10%, and it's a renters market, we might have more options. I don't know if there's, I don't know if we have legal tools. The, it would be helpful to be told, yes, these are the tools that are available and no, we can't do that other thing.
Um, another thing I think we're not mentioning or missing is the, uh, impact this has on existing affordable housing and just existing long-term tenants. And we're talking about conditions of new development, but I mean, maybe looking into the idea that we have for, using the kind of tools we have for condo-ization and, uh, not allowing things to be converted to this kind of housing so much, you know, and with condos, they have to tear it down and that creates a whole other level of labor that sometimes protects them, although in this market, it doesn't the way it did in the old days. But maybe there's some new trigger that we can then turn around and put back for affordable too, uh, that, uh, will protect those units. So basically, I just made a suggestion and then said it probably wouldn't work, but, you know. Uh, Amy?
I, I, you've been waiting. Um, I, I guess, you know, just one thought I have in terms of process, um, I, I guess I would just wonder out loud whether there is a benefit to bringing something forward quickly while we're sorting out some of the other nuances that we identified. And I don't know if that's possible, but right, if, if, right, if, if there's a change to the definition that's gonna help us do a lot of quarter, code enforcement immediately, um, and maybe, maybe those, maybe that definition, um, has consequences, unintended consequences, but maybe we do, maybe we make the change and then we go and, and, and massage it, um, just so we can address, um, I think, um, really kind of the, it's really amazing, right? Like the blatant abuse of these residential units for, for, you know, used really as a hotel room, so.
So, what I think Commissioner Anderson was saying and everyone was saying is there's an urgent need right now. It's actually striking that right throughout the city. Every apartment building is actually a target for these guys, or for people to make money by just booting someone out who's paying $2,700 or $3,000 or even $4,000 bucks. And now you're into, you know, five days, 15 days, whatever, and you're making $8,000 bucks. Why wouldn't you do it? So, the only reason they wouldn't do it is cause they're stopped. But that's what we have to do. And then there's a longer-term discussion about, uh, do you need something of what Commissioner Anderson was saying, some small pool of people coming in and out that's capped? Um, where will that be located? Is it in the downtown or somewhere else? That's a longer discussion. But there's not one person here this evening, and there wasn't last night, who wasn't saying, let's do something pretty quickly.
There wasn't?
Well, I, no. I, I think we've all said, wow, that's.
Oh, I thought you said there wasn't anyone who said that.
No, no, I, I, no, I was saying, everybody's saying it. There's like, that's extraordinary what you've just said. What can we do?
What about an emergency ordinance? For like a, a definition change immediately? Cause frankly, I don't think the definition change, this high-cost housing is not gonna impact students or here, people who are here for medical purposes. I mean, a family with a kid in St. John's is not gonna be paying $6,000 a month for a short-term apartment. So, I don't think it would really impact badly the carve-outs we're talking about. So what about that?
I think that's a question for the planning department.
I, I really couldn't give an affirmative, you know, to anything tonight other than we, we've heard you in terms of bringing back something quickly and we certainly intend to, to, to study the issue and if we're able to bring something back. to study the issue, and if we're able to bring something back quickly, we, of course, will.
So, I think that's an interesting point of view, and that's a very good civil servant answer on the dais. But what I'm also suggesting is that there were a bunch of people last night, seven at the council, and tonight, seven here, plus our emeritus commissioner down there, who was saying, hey, hit the accelerator. And so, I'm hoping, and I know that you'll hear that.
Jase?
Yeah, I would support that idea. If we find, if you find that there are things like tonight, where there are approvals being granted, that we won't be able to reach back in some way and correct the problem later, that obviously puts it on a much more urgent level. And, you know, other than that, if we are approaching, if we're able to address this in a way that clarifies the code, and that code applies to essentially everyone, then that gives us a little bit more flexibility with the timing.
Are there any other...
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for having this discussion with me. Thank you.
See you.
Beautiful. All right, well, I think we've wrapped that up. And our next and final agendized item is a discussion of the proposed revisions to the Planning Commission mission statement. You love it. Okay. This was the work of Jason, and Mario, and myself. And we met three or four times for like two or three hours. It took a really long time. We worked very, very hard. And one thing, I think our, what we basically did is we went really big at first, and we made this very comprehensive list that had all of our general plans and other plans, and we talked about all the things that are part of our process, and all of the more broader, broad goals of the city that we kind of pulled out of the existence of all of those different plans on that list. And we just honed down and down, and made it shorter and shorter, until we got to the proposal that came to you today. And that's the story. Amy?
Even though as a planning commissioner, I try not to cross Ts and DIs, even I, words are so important, and the way we say things really has an influence on our vision and how people understand the world. And when I write something, I spend way too much time writing things. And I have to say that I just thought this was fantastic. I thought the second sentence was incredible, and the first sentence, I had to read twice, but it was great. So, I really appreciate the work that I know went into this, because I think you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you. Yeah, so what do we do? I understand that the ARB changed their mission statement about two years ago.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
This is a, this is a, I'm no longer a social services commissioner, but I'll ask the question. I think this is a fantastic mission statement. The second sentence notes public input, impartial analysis, and best practices. I'm wondering about facts and data. And I'm wondering whether the committee considered those and made a conscious decision to leave them out.
Well, that's exactly what we had, and we decided that best practices sort of encompassed that, and other kinds of theoretical thinking, and that we totally had that.
Okay.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
I mean, we really went through every word, and we circled words, and then we went on the thesaurus. I mean, we were, we were pretty belabored, which is why it took so long. We weren't, well, we did sit around for a while in the beginning, but then we got on it, so...
Okay, thank you.
Well, my hat's off to you, because that was a really long retreat, remember?
That was a fantastic...
That was just a fantastic retreat. But for you to have distilled all that into two sentences is just really remarkable, and thank you.
Should we approve?
Yes, so it'd be great to have the commission, you know, someone make a motion and approve it, and then the next step would be, we were doing some research with the clerks just to find out the origins of the mission statement. It was a little bit of guessing and speculation, but we believe it would be prudent to take it to council as a consent item, just as a formal, like, here's your new mission statement. So, that would be the next step.
I move approval of the mission statement as written in our report.
Second?
Twice tonight.
You and I.
It's a new, beautiful era.
Voice vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think that was unanimous, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was unanimous. Well, that was like the easiest thing ever. All right, so that brings us to the conclusion of our agenda. We have no written communications, we have our informative case list, and stuff like that. Are there any future agenda items?
I just would like to, and Commissioner McKinnon touched on this as well, at some point, revisit the affordable housing requirements, because they're just not cutting it. And I think most of you probably know that, and I know Jing is trying to work this out with the state, we got zapped because we're seven units short on low-income production, which is silly, but true. So, the AHPP really needs to be looked at, and I don't know if that's us, and the housing commission, or both of us, or what, but it really, I think it should be a high priority.
Yeah, not to get into any kind of belabored discussion, but that is already direction we receive from the council. It's one of our priorities.
Right.
The bandwidth is pretty full right now, but it's not that we're doing nothing. We've started those preliminary discussions with both HED and the attorney's office on addressing holistically the issue, because it's kind of merged together with what council asked us to look at for incentivizing housing on the boulevards. It does, it completely relates to the AHPP and the affordable requirements, because they, I think there was a general support for what the structure that was established in the DCP, for how we dealt with affordable housing, and the desire to look at that citywide. So, that's something that we're looking at altogether.
Does that mean eliminating parking minimums?
I don't know about that.
That would be an incentive.
Yeah, maybe. You can tell people that.
So, in the discussion about the building earlier on, there were two areas that identified the affordable housing, and certainly in the DCP, we know Paul Silvan identified the upper elements of affordability, which is a thirty percent, and we were at that in the downtown. So, we know it's somewhere between where we are and where that is. So, a discussion of that sometime soon would be great. And then the other area is, of course, the transport demand management. And I can't recall getting a briefing on the TMO. Certainly last couple of years, I think there were a couple of people here, maybe two years ago, we had a discussion on mobility in early April, but it didn't get to how, if the TMO is working, how is it working? How many people does it affect? Because tonight, we wrote something where we suggested that they would take account of it. I have no idea whether that's feasible or not.
Yeah, we can talk to Francie about putting together a presentation and coming to the commission for that, so...
And I think you mentioned that there'd be an ROI on an update to the next bucket in the zoning code. Are we still adding items to the zoning code?
Bucket.
Are we bucket two or bucket three yet?
We're on three now?
Wow, that's cool.
But actually, this, yeah, this next round actually isn't quite getting into three yet, because we're dealing with kind of the more urgent issues, and we're trying to keep it a little more contained. Has to do with consistency of state density bonus law, there's some cleanups in the DCP, we have direction on fast food in downtown, so it's more of the urgent matters. I think there's been a call for like looking at limitation twenty-one, as Commissioner Perry reminded me. So, we have a few things, it's a little bit of the random things, but...
And Tony's away for weeks.
He is back next week, thank goodness. But the, you know, adding to the list, I think commissioners have been emailing and kind of adding to that, and when we get to bucket three, we'll have to go through the exercise, because it's about, I think, forty-seven items or something at this point, and they're relatively meaty policy discussions, each and every one of them. But this next round is not diving deep into bucket three yet. It's sort of this intermediate step on some of the issues.
So, ROI in, I think it's, what, seven or eight weeks, and then come back before the end of the year with that?
Yeah, that's the idea, to pull those, it'll probably be through the early part of 2019, to be completed at council.
Okay, cool, thank you.
If I can just, I want to sort of say this also for the record. As a social services commissioner, I had been participating in the work of the city's homelessness steering committee. Jing and I discussed this briefly before the meeting, that while that was a formal role in my prior position, that's not necessarily, the city is moving away from formal designations in terms of liaisons from commissions to that work, but to the extent that anything comes up on that body that is relevant to the work of this commission, I'll certainly, I plan to continue to attend, and will forward it on to the chair and to Jing as it comes up. But I hope it's okay with everyone informally that I continue to do that work with that group.
Thank you. We have no more chits, and so we need somebody to move adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Very nice.